Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing number one for the Metropolitan Park Project. Please silence your cell phones. I would like to pass the mic to the Chairwoman, Lorinda Hooks.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the first public hearing of the Metropolitan Park Community Advisory Committee. My name is Lorinda Hooks, Assemblywoman for District 35, and I serve as the Chair of this committee. By law, the committee consists of members appointed by specific elected officials who represent the proposed project site. Other committee members joining me today include Liz Zhang, appointed by Mayor Eric Adams, Gregory Anderson, appointed by Governor Kathy Hochul, George Dixon, appointed by Senator Jessica Ramos, Queensborough President Donovan Richards Jr., he has his staffer, Tariqa Morrison here, and Councilmember Francisco Moya, who's two minutes away. The committee is statutorily charged with reviewing the Metropolitan Park application. To achieve this, each member of the committee has been reviewing the application, and today we are receiving public comments regarding the Metropolitan Park Project. The Gaming Facility Location Board established September 30th, 2025. As of date, by which a vote must be conducted as to whether the project should be advanced to the Gaming Facility Location Board. Before we begin, there are some ground rules. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to offer comments on the Metropolitan Park Project and not a venue for the public to ask questions of either the committee members or the applicant. Just going to repeat that. Before we begin, there are some ground rules. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to offer comments on the Metropolitan Park Project and not a venue for the public to ask questions of either the committee members or the applicant. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up at the registration table. We will be taking speakers on a first-time, first-come basis. Speakers will be allowed two minutes to present their statement. A countdown timer is visible, so each speaker is aware how much time they have remaining. In-person attendance will be capped when at capacity. Today's hearing is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be posted online soon after the event concludes. The recording will be closed captioned, for the hearing impaired. In addition to presenting comment today, there are additional ways to provide comment. As mentioned, today's hearing is the first of two. A second public hearing will be on Tuesday, September 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the same location, Queensborough Hall. The committee will also receive comment by electronic mail. or by mail, which should be directed to Metropolitan Park Community Advisory Committee, care of NYSTEC, 540 Broadway, 3rd Floor, Albany, New York, 12207. All comments spoken, emailed, and written will be documented and given equal review and weight by committee members. While there is no deadline for submitting comments, please note that the committee must complete its work by September 30th, 2025. Those wishing to submit comments are advised to do so as quickly as possible. If you have already submitted a comment in writing via email or mail, please do not sign up to speak if you simply plan to read your comment verbatim. Finally, attendees must remain respectful and courteous. Disruptions will not be tolerated. Anyone using offensive, threatening, or obscene language or behavior may be asked to leave at the discretion of any committee member. As we have no more individuals... That's it? Let me go to the next? Okay. That's it. Next, we will have the presentation from the applicant.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair and CAC members. I'm Mike Sullivan, Sully. I'm going to give a brief introduction. I'm going to take a couple of minutes to respond to three questions from last time around, and then, as requested by the committee, we're going to give a brief project overview. We're going to keep it short, as we know you all got the overview last time. If I could just start by saying, you know, all of this begins four years ago, when my boss Steve Cohen bought the New York Mets. And Mets fans in our local community came to us, reached out to Steve on Twitter and said, "We love the ballpark, but the area around Citi Field leaves a lot to be desired. We would love to see beautiful green space and live music and entertainment and fun bars and restaurants and fun things to do like we see in other cities when we go to see the Mets play." And so there began this journey to think about how we could take the 50 acres of asphalt around Citi Field, the area inside the yellow dotted lines that are part of our lease for the next 81 years, and do something better with that land. The bottom line of what we're going to present today, and that you're all here to consider whether we have adequately consulted with the community and whether we have community support for, is a proposal to take this 25 acres of land that we want to transform into a brand-new New York City Public Park, take the other half of the land and build an entertainment destination, and use one of the games, the Downstate Gaming licenses, as the pay-for for that transformation. I'm not going to go through the whole history again, we heard it last time. The bottom line is, there has never been a park on our site. Throughout history, it's been a swamp, a dump, a parking lot for the First World's Fair, commuter parking lot, and then parking lots for both Shea and Citi Field. But, for the first time in history, we have the opportunity to build an actual, brand-new New York City Public Park on this site that we're offering to build, maintain long-term, and provide the public safety for. We humbly believe this is the best site in New York City for one of these gaming licenses. We're at the intersection of these three great sports venues, the brand-new soccer stadium. Thank you, Councilmember Moya, for your leadership coming in across the street. Obviously, the tennis and the New York Mets. We're on the 7th Line, we're on the Long Island Railroad at the intersection of multiple highways. We have the opportunity to bring back the Marina and Ferry Dock, we're right next to LaGuardia. It's the ideal place to tie together these great sports venues and build something beautiful that we can all be proud of. When we've studied successful entertainment districts around sports venues, both in the U.S. and around the world, the two most important things that we see over and over again for successful venues is green space and live music. A big driver of picking Hard Rock as a partner for this project was they do live music better than anybody. They do over 30,000 live music events around the world every year. We are proposing not only an indoor concert hall, so we can do live music year-round, 5,000-plus seats, so that we can do concerts, we can do community events, but we're also proposing an outdoor band shell. It's over a one-acre lawn that'll allow us to have community, Mets fans, sports fans, community members come and see great live music before and after games. Not only does Hard Rock do a great job with live music, but they do a great job building beautiful buildings on time and on budget. It was incredibly important to Steve that we picked a partner that knows how to deliver a multi-billion-dollar destination resort like this and do it on time and on budget. We're also partnered with Sheryl McKissick, runs the oldest black-founded, black-led, black-run construction management and MWBE firm in the country. They're an equity partner in the project and also leading our MWBE efforts. You'll hear from Albert from McKissick in a few minutes. We also have equity partners in Bill Thompson and Henry Sisneros, who are working with us on the financing for the project. We have an all-New York-based design and development team. It was really important to Steve, and really important to our partner, that whatever we built here looked like it belonged in Queens, something that was authentically New York. You'll hear in a minute from Greg Pasquarelli from Shop Architects. Greg grew up in Queens, near the park. He's been our lead architect on the master design for this project to take you through what it's going to look like. It was incredibly important to Steve and our partners that this was an authentic New York, authentic Queens project. Now, I want to just take you briefly through three items that came up at our last meeting. So the first item is the bike and pedestrian access. Today, we have a dangerous condition where cars going back up onto the White Stone after a game are coming around that corner 20, 30, 40 miles an hour, and there's a pedestrian sidewalk in the middle of the highway on-ramp at grade. It's dangerous, there's not good sightlines coming around that corner. And so as part of this project, we're offering to build a new pedestrian and bike bridge over that intersection. The question came up at the last meeting, would we consider doing bollards to separate the two sides of that sidewalk? We've consulted with our parking and traffic engineers. They do not recommend we separate it with bollards. They recommend we separate it using the coloring and the striping you see there. Because it has this serpentine path that follows these curves, they think that having bollards around those curves could be dangerous for bikes coming around the corners and may collide with them. We also don't want to create a bottleneck condition when we get to the other side to the highway bridge where the sidewalk is more narrow. So, the recommendation from the engineers is this design, where we separate visually with paint, you know, the two directions. The next question that came from Mr. Dixon was the question of a Soapbox Derby track for our community. We have studied the Soapbox Derby track requirements. It's almost 1,000 feet long. It has a height requirement at the very beginning of the track that requires you to go about 40 feet high, about four stories high. Because we're on a flat lot, a flat site, we don't have the natural elevation that allows us to have a track, and because of the length of it, it would go right through the middle of commitments we've already made to our community boards in terms of the parks and playgrounds and ballfields and ball courts and things that we committed to in our community board meetings. So the proposal we would like to come to all of you with today is, we've talked as partners about using the $163 million Community Benefit Fund to help fund a Soapbox Derby track or improvement in a location that the community decides they like, they want, it has the required elevation. We think it's exactly the kind of thing that this fund was designed for, to fund community priorities, things that need doing, things that need fixing, things that need to be better. Obviously, we have to consult with the seven-person board that we're setting up to administer that fund, to make sure there's community support. We'll work with the Parks Department or any other location that the community thinks appropriate. But we're open to helping to fund or funding entirely whatever's appropriate, you know, this kind of an opportunity based on, you know, those requirements. With that, last item to follow up on is, the Borough President raised the idea of using food vendors to help feed our construction workers throughout construction. Based on his request, we've identified a location we think is ideal to do it. We call it Pork Chop Hill, it's today a bus parking lot, literally right across the street from the project site. What we would do is set up a little village in that area that would be safe. I think, based on the construction projections, we probably need four to five food vendors if we're fortunate enough to win a license, to start feeding breakfast and lunch to our workers in January of next year, as we build the early foundations and site work. As the project ramps up, we think we need as many as 20 to 25 different food vendor stalls to help feed the 17,000 union construction workers that will be on this site for the next four years. With that, I'd like to turn it to Lisa Copeland-Ferreras to briefly take us through the community engagement. Thank you, committee members.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the committee members, CAC members. I'd like to take this opportunity to, again, say that we're going to be brief. I know you've heard this presentation in the past, and hopefully they'll be informative. The approach for the community engagement has always been going to the community first. We understood that we needed to go to our neighbors and approach them and listen to them first. This engagement included neighborhoods that were surrounding, immediately surrounding the project site of Corona, East Elmhurst, Flushing, and Jackson Heights. This engagement, we understood that also needed to be diverse, diverse in not only in the outreach, but in the styles that we were going to be communicating. We had settings such as at First Baptist Church, where we had an intimate meeting with about 40 people, engaged with people for several hours to listen to what they wanted to see built and how they wanted to see this project built out. And then we also moved on to much larger settings at Citi Field with several hundred people that we engaged with. Part of this was also that this leadership came, the engagement came from leadership. So, at any point in time, you would see Steve Cohen at the site or the Chairman of Hard Rock, Jim Allen, also participating. Our engagement was four years of community input, over 1,000 meetings with community leaders, business owners, and religious leaders, 16 community workshops, which all included an engagement of 1,800 residents and community leaders. So, this is the project at its full fruition through four years. And what we heard after all of this engagement was, the community wanted expanded, open, green space. They wanted a project that created good-paying jobs, that was very, very important. Climate resiliency and climate readiness, the support of local businesses and MWBE, giving them opportunities to also participate in the building of this project. That this area would be activated 365 days a year. Currently, if anybody goes to a great ballgame at Citi Field, you understand that there is a site, you know, once you're there, their activation is there when there's a game. When there isn't a game, it is dark, it is desolate, and it's not a location for you to go to. Community also wants to remain connected throughout the process. They want to be able to be engaged and thought of and have opportunities to voice their opinions throughout most of the process. Young people felt, "We just don't want grassy areas, we want activated athletic fields where they can play basketball and handball and other activations." Access to the waterfront came up often, especially from our residents in East Elmhurst that wanted to activate the promenade and be able to connect from areas in East Elmhurst to Flushing Meadows Park, but also from the Unisphere and getting from the train station over to the waterfront was very important and something that we heard often. We heard people wanted a hotel, a casino, a live music venue, so that people don't have to go to the city to find entertainment. They wanted the opportunity to have something special and something that they can attend here in Queens. And also, bars and restaurants came up. Restaurants, especially when we talked about, you know, special celebrations, quinceañeras, and having opportunities to have special occasions and a location for them to celebrate here in their borough. Our process, unlike any other applicant, is in a joint venture, in a joint-interest area. And this location triggered six community boards. With this meeting, we would have now had 18 public hearings on this project. 18 times, our community has shown up and expressed their support for community boards 3, 4, 7, 6, 8, and 9. And out of those votes, we were able to get 171 to 35. Part of this Euclid process and legislative actions, we were able to get support from the Queensborough President, City Planning, the New York City Council. And the New York City Council, we had to go to twice and get these same votes, 41 to 2, because we also had alienation, a permitted use legislation that was presented by Assemblywoman Hooks, our Honorable Chair, and the Honorable State Senator John Lee. Also getting votes in the affirmative for these actions. With that being said, I'd like to give the microphone now to Greg Pasquarelli, our lead shop, our lead architect from Shop, who will show you how we implemented these designs.
Thank you, Jalisa, and thank you to the Chair and the committee. My name is Greg Pasquarelli, one of the founding partners of Shop Architects. Next slide? Oh, I'm controlling it, that's why. So, I think what's very interesting in here is, on the left, you can see the original design for Flushing Meadows Corona Park. And one of, I think, the most interesting part is that the park always wanted to get to the waterfront. And then you could see, in the ensuing decades, that Robert Moses used his authority as the Parks Commissioner and through redlining and other strategies to drive highways and expressways through this area, severing the neighborhoods from the park itself, till eventually you get to the third one where you see Shea Stadium and the Tennis Center, and the park is really isolated. Next, oh, I'm doing it again, next slide. So I think from the very beginning, our idea was to think about how to drive the park to reconnect to the waterfront. And not only to do that north-south connection, but also the east-west connections to connect the neighborhoods back to the park. We looked at many different elements, from the architectural history of the World's Fair to the idea about civic buildings. We looked at, the sites that it left us with were kind of flatirons in design. So we looked at the way that New York handles flatiron buildings. We thought it was very interesting that Ebbets Field, which is, of course, the inspiration for Citi Field, was a flatiron building. And those were the kind of architectural elements that we used to create an authentic New York building and skyline. So the plan that you see here has the structured parking placed near the highways to limit the amount of traffic that goes into the surrounding neighborhoods. The main part of the park goes in the northwest orientation, connecting from the train station through the 7th Station all the way to the waterfront. There's a portion that peels off to the east to connect the new neighborhood at Willet's Point and to the soccer stadium. And then the entertainment complex is placed to the west, with the hotel towers put in a position to cast the least amount of shadows on the park. Also, you can see, south of Roosevelt Avenue is where the playing fields are, so that it really connects to the community. So then we've done just a few before-and-after images to show the kind of transformation that this project will be. It went back again. There we go, before. So this is, you can see Citi Field on the right there. And then the after shows the main part of the park, starting from the 7th Train Station, and as it moves up to the north, covering what are now the parking lots. And then you can see the entertainment complex on the left, which is really comprised of a low-rise podium that's really meant to be a kind of civic building that connects to the park. And then you can see the hotel towers that are set back from the park itself, but still far enough away from the community to not cause any shadows or issues there. A key component of this is the reconstruction of the 7th Train Station. We know it's a very complicated one, it's not ADA accessible, it's very difficult to traverse, especially when there's not a game going on. And that's the before. And then the after. Oh, there it goes. You could see the, sorry about that. You could see the station here. There's elevators, it's a new station. One of the key components of it is that there's an outside-the-fair-zone passageway, so that you can get from Flushing Meadows Corona Park through the Long Island Railroad Station, through the 7th Train, and to this park with ramps, with the ability to use a wheelchair or stroller and easily make that connection. And then there's a food market hall and community center on the left. And then this is out in the main part of the parking lots, where you see a portion of the 50 acres of asphalt and the left-field side of Citi Field on the right. And what that will transform into with the park, which we are designing with Field Operations, James Corner Field Ops, they're the landscape architects of Domino Park, of the High Line. James Corner Field Ops, they're the landscape architects of Domino Park, of the High Line. So this will really be a world-class, incredible park and an incredible amenity. And also, what's very important is those east-west connections, so that the community can get to this space. And along Roosevelt Avenue, you could see some of the parking lots on the right, to the south of the seven train station, you've got broken sidewalks, it's not well-lit. And the proposal is that that's where many of the playing fields and the courts will be, there'll be widened sidewalks, it will be well-lit, it will be painted, there's a separated bike lane. It really makes a welcoming connection, both from Flushing and from Corona into the main part of the park. And lastly, I just want to talk about the size. 25 acres is an abstract kind of number sometimes, but you have to think of some of the best parks in the city. Domino Park is five acres, the High Line is seven, Washington Square Park and Bryant Park are 10 acres. This is 25 acres. This is two and a half times the size of Washington Square Park. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Sean Cafri from Hard Rock.
Thank you, Greg. Madam Chair and committee members, it's a pleasure to be before you again today, so thank you. In keeping with my colleagues, we wanted to provide a brief update and highlight one of the most impactful elements of our project, which is job creation. As Sully referenced, we construct beautiful and engaging entertainment venues, and when we create one of these properties, it truly takes a village. The presentation that Greg has just walked you through highlights the project that will require about 6,000 members to operate on our team, as well as 17,000 construction jobs, a total of 23,000 new jobs for New York. Hard Rock has over 60,000, Hard Rock has over 60,000 employees in 77 countries around the world, and we've been recognized by Time Magazine and Forbes as one of the best large employers. In every location, we focus on being good corporate citizens, we invest in our team members, and we focus on helping advance their careers, so that they're able to meet their long-term potential, and this project is going to be no different. We'll work to ensure the jobs that I talk about today work into long-term employment for the residents of Queens and for New York State. So to focus our efforts on the Queens community, we've implemented a local hiring preference. We thought that that was very critical to ensuring these jobs went to the local community. We've also partnered with 20 local organizations to enhance our workforce development efforts, to ensure we have the best-prepared and inclusive workforce possible. As part of the extensive community outreach that Sully and Jalissa referenced in their remarks, we heard from potential employees and vendors that applying for positions or becoming a supplier for the project could be a potential challenge. And as a result, we've created the two Hiring and Information Centers, one specifically at City Field, and a second on National Street in Corona, that will ensure every resource is available to assist the public to get these jobs and secure both construction and ongoing contracts for the property, which we think is really important. We've worked hand-in-hand with the unions, as we do in other jurisdictions, to support union labor, both during the periods of construction, but also in permanent jobs. And can we get a show of hands for how many members we have from the union out here today We truly thank you, the union has been incredible, and we thank you not only for your attendance tonight, but all the incredible continued support that we've received from you. So thank you again. One of the other challenges that we heard at our listening sessions were that families were struggling with the incredible rise in cost of childcare. And hearing that, we engaged with Tammy Rose, who's sitting up in the front, let's give her a round of applause. She and her staff, they own the Queens-based childcare company Little Friends, and we worked hand-in-hand with her to help us create a 17,000-square-foot indoor-outdoor facility to ensure that the children have a safe and nurturing environment while their parents are at work, and this is so critical. What we've designed is 14,000 square feet of indoor space with engaging classrooms, and then another 3,000 square feet dedicated to outdoor green space, so that children can spend time outside, which we know is so important. We've got a total capacity for about 268 children, that covers 10 daycare classrooms for 160 kids, and another six classrooms for 108 children in after-school programming. Let's give a round of applause again for Tammy Rose for helping us. We've also built in a dedicated entrance to ensure there's enhanced security features, dedicated elevator as those children go in and out of the area, and then we'll also have additional security monitoring to ensure these children stay safe. So all in all, Hard Rock looks forward to the opportunity to train and hire and provide great careers to our neighbors, which, given the local hiring preference, will significantly help raise the average income in Queens and address the levels of unemployment that we're seeing throughout the city. We spent a little bit of time the other day talking about wages. With the total annual compensation across the 6,000 employees will be over $140,000, and that median wage of $92,000 for just the wage component significantly exceeds the $42,000 that we're seeing in the surrounding zip codes today around City Field. So we're really excited about that. We took the feedback from everyone in the community here, who you're going to hear from tonight, and we made sure that we took that to heart, and we've incorporated it into every element of our resort's design, the business practices, and we look forward to bringing both a world-class facility that not only we can be excited to operate, but that will make Queens and New York proud. And with that, I'll turn it over to Albert from McKissick &amp; McKissick to walk you through the MWBE programming and reporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Good afternoon, and thank you, Honorable Chairman and CAC members, for having us come back to speak to you all regarding this particular project. As you've heard from my colleagues, we've listened to the community, we've listened to all the stakeholders, we've listened to all the labor unions, and we've come up with a project that fits all of your desires and requests. That's a project that's been presented to you. In addition to that, to underscore everything that we've heard, there's the request for MWBE. MWBE opportunities, okay, so that they can also scale their companies. At McKissick, that's one of the things that you hear Sharon McKissick say, which is to build capacity, and that we engage in, and we do it very well. For this particular project, this eight-plus-billion-dollar project, this is the prime opportunity to do all of that. As we go through the project, we've identified actions that we need to take. We do know the requirement, the demand that has been made of us to meet 30% goal for MWBE. That's no easy task, however, because of our capabilities and the willingness of all the partners of this project, we're willing to take that up and set a goal of 35%, raise the bar even more, because we do believe that the capacity is there. In addition to that, we are committing to 6% of veteran business involvement, because they are available and they can also do the work. In addition to that, we're also going to commit to local contractors, local businesses, local MWBEs, for them to be part of this project. We do know, we do know that funding, capital, is always a barrier to getting involved in projects of this size. For that, for that reason, we've set aside $25 million, $25 million available for all MWBE contractors who are interested and can qualify to do the job, to tap into for the loans that's required for them to provide material, labor, mobilize, and get the job done. That's what we're committing to, and those will be even better than standard rates and almost close to zero loan financing. That's a great opportunity, and that's what we're committing to do. There's a lot going on on this project, between construction personnel, designing, building the project, there's a lot of numbers that will be floating around. There is a request from our stakeholders that we extract from everything that is going on to report about the progress of our activities and efforts. So with that said, we're going to design special reports, so that we can communicate to the stakeholders, to the community, so they can see in numbers what we are achieving, that we're committing to all of our promises of 35%. We're going to create all the types of reports in every fashion we requested, to make sure that the communication is clear, that we are meeting and exceeding our goals. So thank you, and with that, I'd like to pass it back to Sully.
I'm just going to very briefly wrap up here. CAC members, as you sit here and consider whether this project has adequately engaged the community and whether we have adequate community support, I just want to briefly remind you of, I think, literally, an unprecedented community benefit package here that includes community benefits and public realm elements of over $1 billion, including the brand-new 25-acre New York City Public Park that we're going to build, maintain, and provide the public safety for long-term. Transforming our MTA station and making it safe and accessible, improving the climate infrastructure on the site. Today, it's, as you guys know, 50 acres of asphalt that floods when it rains, everything ends up in the flood, Flushing Bay, you know, making it climate resilient, improving the road network that's left over from the First World's Fair to improve the traffic and parking situation, building the Taste of Queens Food Hall, building the community space that we've committed to, and the one-time neighborhood projects in the neighborhoods around us. Finally, as you look at the question of community support, the results have been extraordinary. And there's a lot of people in this room, a lot of people that you'll probably see next week that have spent a lot of their time to come out, to give us feedback on what they'd like to see at this site, that have come to community board member meetings, that have come and testified about what matters to them here in their community. And we're incredibly proud of the 88% support level that we received across all the elected official bodies that voted on this project, the 87% support rate that we got when we went out and knocked on 40,000 doors and talked to people on the streets around us, and finally, the 78% support we're seeing Queens-wide in public polling, three public polls that we've done now. Interestingly, the highest support levels we see are in the neighborhoods closest to us, our neighbors that want the jobs, they want the green space, they want the entertainment. With that, I thank you all very much, appreciate it.
We would like to proceed with the public comments section, public comments for this hearing. I would like to call the, first, we'll give preference to the elected officials, please come up to the mic, state your name, zip code, and affiliation, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Councilmember, former Councilmember Danny Drum, and I represented areas that surround the Casino Project Metropolitan Park. I represented Jackson Heights, Elmhurst, East Elmhurst, and parts of Corona during my career. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the work that you're doing, and of course, to our other elected officials, to my former colleague, Councilmember Francisco Moya, and of course, to our Borough President, and of course, to our other members of the board as well. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Queens. I can't encourage it enough. I have lived in Queens almost all my life, and we have never had an opportunity like this before. For all the time that I've lived in Queens, that area around City Field has been barren, has been underused, and has been in desperate need of improvement. And this finally is our opportunity to do that. We have been promised, and we are sure, that the Steve Cohen and the Met Park folks will keep those commitments to the community, because they already have. They have already invested in a number of the community organizations. We are really happy to see that one of the most important pieces of this is that they're willing to build a 25-acre park in an area where, in Jackson Heights, we had very little parkland, that they're going to create over 15,000 jobs. I saw today 23,000 jobs, actually, and those jobs will be mostly union jobs, which I think is fantastic. We're going to have 365 days of usage in that area, and I see my time is really getting short, because, you know, as an elected official politician, we're not used to being only given two minutes to speak. But that being said, I will also say that the votes that occurred with the surrounding community boards and the numbers of the folks that were supporting the project, and even in the City Council, Councilmember Moya, that you had a 42 to 2 vote, I don't think I've ever seen in the City Council, a 42 to 2 vote for any land-use item in the City Council. So that support is there, I support that, and I hope that you will be supporting this project as well. Thank you very much.
Corner, please, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Costa Constantinidis. It's always good to see my former colleague and brother Donovan Richards, and of course, City Councilmember Francisco Moya, my other brother, and all of the great committee members. Thank you for your time. You know, I'm a lifelong Queens resident, and I'm also someone that's visited other ballparks throughout the country. I've visited Twain on other 30 ballparks with my son. And throughout the country, they're making these types of investments that Metropolitan Park is looking to do here. We deserve, Queens would be the fourth-largest city in the country, and I'm stealing Tom Gretch's line, but we would be the fourth-largest city in the country, and yet, we are, we should not limit ourselves. We should have the opportunity not to cross a bridge or go over a parkway, to be able to have a day at the ballpark, spend a day playing outside with our kids, go home, find a babysitter, then go out for a night out, and enjoy that all in our own backyard, and that money's staying in our borough. We should be able to have a place, not a asphalt parking lot, but a genuine, real green park that's going to lower the ambient temperature of the surrounding community, that's going to soak up the stormwater. When it rains, it's only going to get hotter in New York City, and it's only going to get wetter. If we're not making the investments in our infrastructure that this park plan is going to do, we are going to miss an opportunity. We, you know, with the union jobs that my former colleague Danny Drum brought up, an opportunity to put food on the tables for real families, and also to regulate, you know, as part, it's a small part of it, it's only 5%, but the actual casino, and I have 17 seconds, regulate gambling, anyone can go on their phone right now and gamble. My father did it. I got beat up by a bookie at 16 years old. Having a controlled environment, where people can go, and if they are going over the limit, it's time to stop them. Hard Rock has made those commitments to our community.
Well, hello and good afternoon, and especially hello to my former boss, Councilmember Francisco Moya. My name is Ari Espinal, and I am a proud Laborers Local 79 member, but also born and raised in Corona. As someone who loves this project, as a labor organization committed to well-being of working families, we recognize the critical importance of public green space, not only as places of recreation and health, but also as engines of good union jobs, economic development, and environmental justice. This project represents a win-win for all of us. Building, maintaining, and operating in Metropolitan Park will create good-paying, unionized jobs for construction workers, landscapers, and staff. These are careers that support families and build stronger local economies. Equity working-class neighborhoods, too often low- and middle-income communities, many of them are from a home of a union member, lack access to clean, safe, and accessible green space. This park will bring long overdue investment and resources to help people of Queens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Calling numbers 1 to 5 at the mic, please, 1 to 5.
Am I allowed to start?
Yep.
My name is Simon Pelman. I am the elected Democratic District Leader in the 27th Assembly District. I've been a resident of Queens since 1963. I enjoyed the World's Fair at the time. I'm also a 42-year member of Community Board Eight, which voted overwhelmingly to support the Metropolitan Park. I also am CEO and President of Union Plaza Care Center, which is a 280-bed, long-term care facility on Union Street off Northern Boulevard. We have 280 seniors who like to go to the park, most of them are Asian, 90%, they like to gamble. We take them many times a year down to resorts, which is an hour on the Van Wyk Expressway in each direction. Instead of having that, if we have Metropolitan Park, we can enjoy the park, we can enjoy the venues, we can... the venues, we can enjoy the food court, and if they want to gamble, they certainly have the right to do that. I applaud Metropolitan Park for their view. I've been a Met fan for a billion years, and it's time for that asphalt to disappear. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. My name is Alan Sherman, and I've been a resident of Q Garden Hills, Flushing, since 1974, and Queens since 1963. I've seen many changes to Queens over the years, some good, some bad. I feel Metropolitan Park will be a great addition to Queens County. I find it funny that all the people who testify against the park due to addiction all have cell phones. Gambling on your cellphone is growing without anyone knowing what is going on behind closed doors. Will they get rid of their cell phones? Will they try to have the gambling apps taken down? What about addiction to alcohol and marijuana? All legal now. With the approval of the City of Yes, there will be a growth in building within our county. In Willets Point, they're building 2,500 affordable housing units right across the street from Citi Field, Metropolitan Park, and the new soccer stadium. Next to housing, our beloved city needs jobs, jobs, jobs. Where will these people work? The 7 subway line is one of the most overcrowded lines in New York City. It'll be difficult for them to commute to Manhattan when they can't get on the subway. What better idea is there than to employ all these people, as well as other people from Queens, at Metropolitan Park? They can walk or bike to work. The 1964-65 New York World's Fair had the theme, "There's a Great Big Beautiful Tomorrow." Metropolitan Park is a great big, beautiful tomorrow, the next generation. Home to both airports, Queens brings a lot of tourists to New York City. With all the problems going on with our airports nowadays, with delays, cancellations, layoffs, what better place to hang out than Metropolitan Park while you're waiting for your flight out of LaGuardia?
Thank you, sir. You're at thyme.
All right. Let's go Mets, let's go Queens, let's go Metropolitan Park.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Gutman. I'm the Executive Director of the Queens Economic Development Corporation. I come to speak in support of Metropolitan Park's innovative and comprehensive proposal. The Mets and the rest of the Metropolitan Park team have been a trusted community partner and longtime supporter of the work that we do at QEDC. Thanks in part to their support, each year we help more than 3,000 of our neighbors realize their entrepreneurial dreams through more than a dozen life-changing programs. In particular, their recent support for MWBE initiatives and work in neighborhood development have truly moved the needle. This proposal would result in thousands of high-quality union jobs, billions of dollars in funding for education, and increased funding for much-needed transit improvements. We are particularly excited about the economic opportunity unlocked by transforming a sea of asphalt into a world-class commercial, residential, and entertainment neighborhood. This plan will weave back together neighborhoods that have long been separated by imposing physical barriers, and the resulting vision is exactly the type of walkable and transit-first community that Queens needs and deserves. Queens is the sports and gaming capital of New York City. We play host to more major sporting events than any other borough, and this site's soon-to-be neighbor, Etihad Park, is only going to add to that count. And we're second only to Manhattan in our share of the city's tourism economy, with approximately 12% of our workforce employed directly or indirectly in tourism. The Metropolitan Park proposal will further accelerate both of these trends, which are vital to ensuring Queens' economic future. This plan is future-focused and community-first. I thank the board for their time and ask the board to approve this proposal. Thank you.
My name is Annie Lowe, and I'm an attorney with the Asian American Legal Defense and Education Fund, or ALDEF. We urge you to reject this casino and luxury hotel proposal. ALDEF fights for immigrant communities facing predatory developments that displace working-class residents and small businesses. We've seen decades of casino and luxury hotel proposals, and we know the billionaire developer playbook. We've been told that this casino will come with community benefits, but we know through experience that developer-promised benefits are a myth. First, no community benefits agreement could offset the harm of this luxury complex, which will compound the rampant speculation that is already displacing communities of color in Queens. How will an unenforceable letter of intent for a vague housing project, a gentrifier food hall, and measly donations to local organizations help the small businesses that are forced to shutter and the families forced to move out? Second, community benefits are rarely enforceable promises. Take Atlantic Yards, where a poorly drafted CBA fell apart, leaving only a state government agency to enforce the rest of the agreement. If ESD is unable to hold developers accountable, how can we expect the Gaming Commission to do so here? Finally, CBAs drive a wedge in communities by making infrastructure improvements contingent on harmful developments. And when a project no longer benefits a developer, they can just pull the plug on the project and the CBA. Recently in Philadelphia, ALDEF represented Chinatown residents and small business owners fighting the construction of an arena in their neighborhood. The city government fell for the CBA trap and approved the project over widespread opposition. But after they had burned their bridges with the Asian community, the developer ended up pulling out of the site anyway, along with the promised CBA. And just this week, developers abandoned the Innovation Q&amp;S project, along with their lofty promises of affordable housing and green space. We urge you not to fall for the same trap again. If you do, elected officials and community leaders will lose the support of Asian-American voters. ALDEF's latest exit poll found that nearly 70% of Asian-American voters in Flushing opposed the casino. 72% stated that this issue would influence how they vote in future local elections.
Thank you. You're at thyme.
Hi, my name is Zeke Dunn. I'm not here with a group, I'm just a community member who's here to say what I see. I see a lot of nice suits, I smell a lot of expensive cologne, I see millionaires who stand to make billions, and I see the rest of us here begging. I see workers who are begging these guys for a job. I see electeds who are begging these guys for revenue. I see community members who are begging these guys for a park and a pedestrian bridge we should have had already. This whole community input process has asked us, as a community, the question, what should we beg the rich guys for? That's what this process has been. We don't need to beg rich guys for parks. This is backwards. We want jobs, we can build social housing, we can build the IBX, we can repair our schools. If we want revenue, we can make guys like Steve Cohen and these silk shirts pay their fair share. We're giving away public land to build a giant vacuum that sucks cash out of our community. This $140,000, you know, average pay for these union jobs, that's money that they're sucking out of this community first. Then they're keeping most of it. And then we're here to beg them to give us a little shaving of that back. We're here to beg them to be the ones that get a little piece. We should hold ourselves to a higher standard. Keep public goods public. Create jobs via public infrastructure. Tax the rich to pay for it. Thank you.
Calling numbers 6 to 12, please. Number 6 to 12. Line up at the mic, please.
I am Versha Mathroni with an MPH in Environmental Health and a BA in Biology. I'm going to share the Junior Ranger Park pledge I learned as a child. As a junior ranger, I pledge to be part of the Parks Department family, to protect and help defend the parks and creatures within, to preserve all I see, every plant and every tree, because as a junior ranger, it all belongs to me. As a Flushing, Queens resident, public land should not be privatized. Parks are the lungs of community. Parks are for surrounding families. Children get to play, families have gatherings like picnics, birthday parties, and youth plays, sports like soccer, frisbee, and tennis. There is outdoor recreation for walking, biking, sailing, free, low-cost educational, recreational, and cultural centers, science and art museums, theater, zoo, rec center, all free and affordable for multicultural and multi-generational communities who can't afford privatized clubs. Casinos do not nurture these activities. Health costs to losing zoned public land, a climate refuge includes physical, like diseases like obesity, respiratory illnesses, CVD, and mental health, like depression, anxiety, stress, and decreased overall well-being. Community costs to a casino, especially for communities of color, Latinx, and Asian communities live nearby. It's predatory, it sucks income from local communities, it decreases social ties, it drops home and property values, and there are legal and socioeconomic outcomes for host communities. Gambling, a community's well-being. Casinos are not family-friendly. And there are also environmental costs, increase in urban heat due to added pollution and carbon emissions from cars and buses, decreased water quality and flooding, decreased access to green space, soils, trees, as natural carbon sinks. It's a civic responsibility that our representatives truly represent our interests and stand up to special moneyed interests and not be bribed or bought off by billionaires.
Thank you. You're at thyme.
Hi, my name is Julius. I am the managing partner of Glazed Donuts. After five brick-and-mortars in New Jersey, five professional stadiums, we're building our brick-and-mortar here in Queens Q Gardens. And why do I say that? I'm a Queens native, and I'm building a, we're building a $2 million store right here, three blocks down, and we will be providing 25 jobs for our Queens native. So why do I say that? Steve Cohen has put forward a vision that's bigger than baseball. His plan to build this casino and this park is more than just a project, it's a promise, a promise of good-paying jobs, economic growth, and investment in our community. Let's be clear, Queens is full of hard-working families who deserve access to this opportunity, like myself. I'm a Queens native. The project will create thousands of construction jobs right away, and once completed, it will provide permanent careers in hospitality, entertainment management. These aren't just jobs, they're a pathway for families to build stability, for our young people to stay and grow right here in Queens, just like I did. But it doesn't stop with jobs. A casino and a park of this scale will attract visitors, boost local business, and generate significant tax revenue that can go back into our schools, housing, and public services. This means better classrooms, safer streets, and a strong neighborhood. Steve Cohen and his team have already proven his commitment to Queens through his stewardship of the Mets and his investment around Citi Field. He understands the community, he's ready to invest in this future. This isn't just about building a park and a casino, it's about building opportunity, hope, and building a strong Queens. So today, I proudly stand in support of Steve Cohen's vision, because when Queens wins, we all win. Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Chuck Appelian. I am the Chairman of Community Board Seven here in Queens, and I'm also the Land Use Chairman, and I've heard numerous, numerous hearings regarding Metropolitan Park. I am proud to say our board voted overwhelmingly, 36 to 4, to approve the rezoning application for Metropolitan Park. I'm going to focus on something because so much is going to be said over and over again, but we were so impressed by the $400 million in MTA station improvements that will be completely funded by Metropolitan Park, built to MTA standards. It's important to remember, this creates a modern gateway to 42,000 fans that will attend every event at Citi Field, 25,000 fans that will attend every event at the new Etihad Soccer Stadium, 23,000 fans that will attend every event at the USTA Billy Jean King Stadium, and, for someone that spent 18 years working on this project, the 10,000 residents and workers in the new Willets Point development who will use that station every single day. By comparison, in 2005, there was a plan to bring the Olympics to New York City. $200 million was pledged to desperately fund capital improvements for Flushing Meadow Corona Park. My point is that unfortunately, the bid was not successful, but here we are, 20 years later, and the park has never received otherwise funding for any of those capital improvements. Without Metropolitan Park, the MTA station improvements would endure the same demise. Please, don't let that happen. We need and we deserve Metropolitan Park. Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, Board, Committee, thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Tom Gretch. I'm the President and CEO of the Queens Chamber of Commerce, the largest, oldest, and I might add also the most diverse Chamber of Commerce and organization in Queens, and for the most part, throughout New York City. It gives me great privilege and honor to be here today. Post-COVID, during COVID, there were 6,000 restaurants before COVID hit. We lost 1,000 restaurants. There wasn't a lot of support out there to bring them back, for obvious reasons with the virus, but end of the day, people like Stephen Alex Cohen stepped forth and gave $17.5 million, 15 in outright grants, and 2.5 million in loans. With the help of people like Donovan Richards and other community groups, we gave out the most in Queens County amongst all those groups. The joy that people felt, the thankfulness, the gratitude they felt, not thinking about it for any other reason than to pay their mortgage, pay off some of their debts, was astounding, astounding. Those grants were all unrestricted and given with no expectations whatsoever. As somebody who's been part of this effort for the last four years, hosting events at the Boulevard Corporate Center, where we're based on Sunday, on a Sunday, where small businesses throughout Queens County came to learn, citizens came to learn, to want to have input on this thing, it was remarkable. It's also important to note that that's 23,000 jobs are union jobs. We have been told that we are the most, yes, let's hear it for the union. We have been told that, we have been told that we're the most pro-union chamber probably in all of the US, but I'll tell you this, they're not just jobs, they're careers. They pay for mortgages, they pay for rents, they pay for college educations, they pay the bills for average New Yorkers, regular people who are trying to get ahead. I beseech the committee, I thank the committee, I thank the developers and the team that's done this, these things don't happen every once in a while. This is a one-time generational project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Vaughn Taylor, just a regular Queens native. For years, the land surrounding Citi Field has been nothing but asphalt and parking lots and rundown auto shops. Now we have the once-in-a-generation chance to reimagine it into something more that truly serves Queens, our families, our workers, and our future. The project will bring over 20 acres of new green space, playgrounds, athletic fields, and gathering areas, safe, family-friendly spaces where our kids can play, our seniors can relax, and our community can come together. It will also create tens of thousands of union jobs, not just in construction, but long-term positioned in hospitality, food service, maintenance, and entertainment. That means real opportunities for our neighbors right here in Queens. And as Queens becomes more of a destination for culture and entertainment, the value of surrounding homes and businesses will grow as well, helping local property owners build equity and strengthening our tax base to invay and invest in schools, roads, and services. On top of that, Metropolitan Park will celebrate the diversity of our borough with the Queens-based Food Hall that highlights the local small businesses and the culture that would make the community so unique. Most importantly, this is more than just a development, it's an investment in Queens. It's a chance to turn an empty pavement into a hub of activity, culture, and economic growth that all of us can be part of. I encourage this board, and the community, and our neighbors to see Metropolitan Park as not a project for someone else, but as an opportunity for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling numbers 12 to 17, 12 to 17 at the mic, please. Oh, 11?
Oh, 12.
Oh, he's number 12.
Want me to start now?
Go for it.
Excuse me, because smiling so much, that was my son. Actually. Oh, I should say, I'm just his father now, I'm, you know, we'll switch roles. My name is Frank Taylor. I am the former Chair of Community Board Three. No, I was never voted out, my term was over. I'd like to say, first of all, greetings to such a distinguished board, Madam Chair, Honorable Borough President, and the rest of the panel there, Mr. Dixon. It is an honor to speak in front of you, and I'm speaking today as a resident. I am president of Ditmars Boulevard Block Association, we're known throughout the city. This is a project that we backed 110%. I'm going to say that again, we backed this 110%. It is time for Queens to take its proper place. Where I'm at, and what I represented as former Chair, was East Elmhurst, North Corona, and Jackson Heights. We have been left behind. Shelters, Roosevelt Avenue, I don't need to really expand on that, everyone knows what's going on there. We need jobs. We need union jobs, and we need non-union jobs. We need people that can have a future. We need people that can have a future in Queens. We need things to do. I don't want to repeat what everybody said here, but you got to look at it like this. You have a present, you have a past. Do we have a future? Well, you got to answer that today. This is the future. This is the future of this area of Queens and serving New York City. Please, as a resident, we are asking you to approve this project. It is a no-brainer, to coin another phrase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me. We're calling numbers 13 to 17, 13 to 17, please.
Okay, my name is Fred Fu. I was the president of Flushing Chinese Business Association, year 2004. I was the board member of, uh... So many. Now I'm the board member of Community Board Seven and Flushing YMCA. I am a new immigrant in 1980. When I come from my airport, I chose living in Flushing. And I live in an apartment. People tell me, this apartment is from 1939. A few years later, I moved to a condominium, 41th and 25 Casino Boulevard, next to the Flushing Library, that is a condominium, condo. And the people told me, that is built in 1964. So you can imagine, why is 1939 and then 1964? That's the two times warfare. So Flushing changed that two times. After that, there is no change. But we take number seven train from Main Street to the end, they call it Hudson Yard. In the middle, we see another city, they call it the London City. That's different. Why they change? Because year 2001, Olympic site, we didn't get Olympic, so we have site over there. My friend told me, you are not in New York, you live in Queens, live in Flushing. This is the once-in-a-lifetime only chance we can change. We want people saying, hey, Fred, you live in Flushing, you live in Manhattan, you live in New York, we are New York, we are not different. There's only one New York. Queens, Manhattan, Bronx, Stand Island, Brooklyn. We need you. Thank you.
Well, hi, good afternoon. My name is Dion Son Yu. I am representing the Flushing Business Improvement District, a non-profit organization. So I'm here to support a project. I'm sure like me, or many of you, are tired of the Queens or the Flushing called the outer borough, the past two borough. And I believe with this project, we can make a change to this title, especially with the 65 million, the visitors that are passing through JFK or LaGuardia. And if only we can, I mean, only if we can capture 1% to 2% of those visitors, that is additional 1% to 2% million visitors to Queens and to Flushing. And we're looking at 100, I mean, hundreds millions additional revenue to our local community, and that is what I call an economic boost to our local economy. Our community need those fundings for growth and sustainability. Especially with those benefit, will not just benefit the developers, it will benefit our community as well, especially thousands of business. And also, let's not forget, the tens and thousands of employees and their families will benefit for the foreseeable future. Now, the second, as you all know, downtown Flushing, we comprise of many co-ops and condos with 1% to 2% family houses. We desperately need open spaces for those families. And third, Sully and his team has been engaged with us since beginning, and are committed that we move forward together. So therefore, let's support the project. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me this chance to speak. My name is Myung Mi Kim. I'm the president and CEO of Korean Community Services. More than 50 years, our nonprofit has served working families in New York. Every day, we have about 1,700 people with aging, health, and working families, job programs. For me, Metropolitan Park is about families and community. The plan includes 25 acres of new park space, more than Bryant Park and the Highlight and Combined. This will give children safe place to play, older adults a place to gather, and families a place to come together. In this also, good job, at KCS, we trained 65 to 70 older adults each year. Over 30% find long-term job. We know how much a job can change in life. This is why the program, the promise, 23,000 good-paying jobs is so powerful for Queens. Metropolitan Park is an investment in people. It is about dignity, opportunity, and hope for every resident. I support this project because of the families, because of the community. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Hyun-Tak Lee. I came from Korean American Association of Queens. All of them developing projects, the both-side effect. One of them positive, one of them negative. This Metropolitan Park project is our community, or our, you know, Queens area, the more-than-positive effect. That completed this Metropolitan Park project will provide more than job and more pleasing living environment in our Queens neighborhood. I also support this project because I believe that once completed, this Metropolitan Park will become landmark of Queens and New York City. Thank you.
To our chair, Assemblymember Linder Hooks, to our Borough President Donovan Richards, to our councilmember Francisco Moya, and to the esteemed members of this community advisory committee and everyone here on tonight. My name is Bishop Mitchell Taylor. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Urban Upbound, a citywide nonprofit that was created 21 years ago to break cycles of poverty in public housing neighborhoods by giving residents the tools and resources they need for economic mobility and self-sufficiency. We do that through seven program areas: business innovation, career development, one-on-one financial counseling. We're the largest tax repairer in the state of New York, number three in the country, and we own our own bank, the Urban Upbound Federal Credit Union. For us, none of that is novel when it stands individually, but when you can comprehensively integrate them on campuses, it becomes magical. I have three Es that I want to share with you on today. Number one, economics. The Metropolitan Park has already demonstrated a sizable contribution to the economics of Queens and New York City. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have gone to NYC Kids' Rides, Urban Upbound, Queensbridge, and residents of Northwestern Queens. Education, they have committed to be ongoing partners in our scholarship program for kids in public school that hope to go to college, but now they have a resource, when they enter kindergarten, to seed money for their educational future. Environment, we've had 50,000 square feet of asphalt contaminating and creating a heat bed forever in that park area. This is an opportunity for us to take advantage of those three Es. Now, being a pastor of the greatest church in Queens, the most diverse community in the world, I must say, if I was taking a text, I would say, my subject would be this.
Thank you, you're at time.
Don't let your now prevent you from getting to your next. Thank you.
Okay. Calling numbers 17 to 25, 17 to 25. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Ted Tang. I am a proud lifelong Queens resident of... So to understand my support of Metropolitan Park, I want to share a bit of my family's history. When we first came to this country, my father started out as a delivery driver, bringing auto parts to local mechanics, including Willets Point in the area. This job led him to strike out on his own as a small business owner. Today, I am the COO of an international auto parts corporation from this job. This trajectory is only possible through grit, but more importantly, through the community of Queens. Supporting Metropolitan Park is not a choice, it's a responsibility, one born from gratitude and from the duty to continue the means to build a better life for those with it who come after us. We all know progress comes at a cost. For many immigrant families like my own, that cost has been heavy: long hours, sacrifices, and parents stuck at work while their children perform in school auditoriums or walk across the stage at graduation. Metropolitan Park can't erase those realities, but it sure can help alleviate some of that burden. It will create tens of thousands of jobs directly, steady paychecks that families can count on. The ripple effects will reach even further. Metropolitan Park will draw new visitors and new energy into Queens. That means fuller restaurants, busier shops, and small businesses with the revenue to expand and hire more workers. This will mean countless more opportunities and an impressive cycle of growth. This growth, once again, creates stronger neighborhoods, greater stability, and an economy where parents don't have to pay such a steep price to build their future. True progress means more than a paycheck, and Metropolitan Park recognizes that. Childcare today is more expensive than ever, forcing many families into difficult trade-offs, often giving up a second income or stepping back from career simply to ensure their children are cared for. Metropolitan Park offers a better path by providing childcare for its employees, making dual incomes possible for those who want it. Flushing was once my gateway to the American dream, and with Metropolitan Park and your votes, it can be that for generations to come.
Thank you.
Hi, committee. Thank you, committee, for having me today. My name is Brian Lee. Born here in Flushing and currently residing in Little Neck, right down the road. Me and my family have been running a vocational trade school in the city for over 30 years. We're graduating hundreds of skilled workers who need jobs. And I know a lot of previous testimonies highlighted this, but that just shows how much gravity employment is really pulling right now. This is why I'm voicing my support for Metropolitan Park. The jobs and careers that Metropolitan Park is creating would be huge for schools, private like mine, and public schools locally and in the entire city. They need this opportunity, and we can't afford to pass this up. Let's please get this done. Shout out to Sully and his team for their hard work, and thank you again, committee, for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Good evening, CAC. My name is Devon Lomax. I'm the political director for DC9. We're the Painters and Allied Trades Union. This project gets me excited. You know, I had a bunch of stuff written down to say, but this project gets me excited as a lifelong Queens resident. If you know anything about construction, you know that if we don't work, we don't get paid. We work our way out of a job, and Metropolitan Park has committed to unionize labor, to put our members to work, to feed their families, to pay their mortgages, to put their kids through school. The other reason why I'm excited is because they've also committed to using our apprenticeship programs. I myself am a graduate of our apprenticeship program, long time ago, but I am a graduate of our apprenticeship program, and they have committed to using apprentices. And why does that matter? Because if we're talking about giving jobs and careers to young people that may not want to go to college, here's an opportunity to give them that career path. We just celebrated Labor Day, so I don't know about the rest of the union members in here, we don't beg for jobs. We strap on our boots every day and we go to work, and we fight for everything that we get. So we are fully supportive of this project, and thank you guys for the time.
Hi. My name is Thomas. I'm the owner, operator of Nine Plus KTV and Carriker Flushing, Carriker Restaurant in Flushing, also Happy Liquors, a liquor store across from Skyview Mall. On top of this, is also Starlight Hotel, which we own on top of the liquor store, which also across from Skyview Mall. My family operates Royal Queen, a dim sum restaurant in downtown Flushing, and a pharmacy too, also on Main Street. I've been living and working in Flushing for over 15 years now, and this is a very exciting time and opportunity for the community. It's not just about the casino, but about the park, the facilities, the brand-new seven train station, which sorely need a refresh and upgrade, and the community will thoroughly enjoy. It's also the concerts, the sporting, and the events that will drive traffic to local area and businesses. The Queens Food Hall will also be showcased as a world's borough of all the delicious cuisine from many countries. It's also a thousand, it's a thousand jobs that will bring into the Queens community. I strongly support and believe this project will be a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Picorillo, and I'm the Director of Area Standards for the New York City District Council of Carpeters. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the thousands of union carpeters who live and work in the city. Men and women who take pride in building New York the right way, many of which who live in this area. We support the Willets Point Project because it's going to bring real benefits to the people of Queens. Far too long, Willets Point has been ignored. Flooded streets, toxic soil, no real infrastructure. This plan finally gives us a chance to clean it up and build something that works for working families. We're talking about building affordable housing, new public school, 25 acres of green space, funding for health clinics, youth programs, addictive services, and much more right here in the neighborhoods. And jobs, thousands of good-paying union jobs, construction jobs and permanent jobs, careers and benefits. And most important, dignity. By using building trades, union-only labor, this ensures no predatory contractors will prey on workers, which happens every day in this borough and all over the city. The developers are also committing to hire minority and women-owned businesses, supporting small business lending, and improving transit access, including upgrades to the seven train to make it ADA accessible. This project is about turning a forgotten corner of Queens into a thriving, inclusive community. It's about giving our kids a shot at a better life, and it's about making sure union, making sure union labor is at the heart of this transformation. So I'm asking this committee, let's move this forward, let's build something that lifts up working families and puts Queens first. Thank you.
Chairwoman Hooks and all the distinguished members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Frankie Miranda, and I am the president and CEO of the Hispanic Federation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering and advancing Hispanic communities. My testimony today is informed by the insight of more than 100 New York City-based member agencies, all committed to improving the lives and outcomes for all New Yorkers. I'm also a proud resident of Queens for more than 30 years, and I'm deeply committed to ensuring that our borough thrives. I am here to testify before you with a clear message: Metropolitan Park is owed to Queens. For decades, this section of Queens had been overlooked and under-invested. The surrounding communities are still reeling from the devastating impact of COVID-19 pandemic. Neighborhoods like Corona, East Elm Hurst, Elm Hurst, and Jackson Heights were among the hardest hit in the entire city and have still not fully recovered. New York City unemployment has disproportionately affected low-income, black, Latino immigrant, and service sectors workers. Our people, who were considered essential workers, have been, with a few notable exceptions, in this invisible and overlooked when it comes to transformational investments. That is why Metropolitan Park is essential to the future of these communities. This project brings eight billion dollars in private investment and twenty-three thousand good-paying jobs. Our Queens families deserve the opportunity to live in their neighborhood and work in their neighborhood. And I know how transformative this can be. As a son of a hotel casino worker in Puerto Rico, my father was able to give us the opportunity for a better life because of a good-paying union job. I want to make sure that this dream is also possible for other families here in Queens. Metropolitan Park is owed to Queens. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the Community Advisory Committee, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brian Chen, and I am the Chief Strategy Officer at the Chinese-American Planning Council. We are a sixty-year-old social services organization rooted in community and anchored across nearly forty sites throughout New York City that serve eighty thousand individuals and families annually, including our Queens Community Center in Flushing. From early childcare and after-school programs to English literacy classes and older adult programming, our holistic services ensure community members not only survive, but thrive. The Chinese-American Planning Council is fully supportive of the inclusive, community-integrated workforce and economic development potential of the Metropolitan Park project, as it aligns with our agency's mission to promote the social and economic empowerment of immigrant and low-income New Yorkers. As an organization that provides linguistically-accessible and culturally-competent employment services and wraparound supports, we believe Metropolitan Park has the potential to move the needle on economic mobility for Queens residents by creating real pathways for the upskilling, hiring, and retention of local talent. Through the project's commitment to supporting workforce training, the creation of over twenty-three thousand good-paying permanent and construction union jobs, career advancement opportunities with wages significantly higher than the current average median wage in Queens, and prioritization of MWPEs through local spending, Metropolitan Park is positioned to be an opportunity hub inclusive of the local business community and the borough's diverse but often marginalized populations, including the multilingual and multi-generational immigrants, individuals with disabilities, and unemployed and underemployed Queens residents served by community organizations such as the Chinese-American Planning Council. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Larry Gallegos, a lifelong Queens resident who was raising my two children in this community, and I apologize for not wearing my silk shirt today. As I look around, as I look around at who my fellow supporters are, I see folks that I run into in my community all the time. I see the same folks I run into at the farmer's market in Jackson Heights or La Cabana in Corona, the promenade and elsewhere. I see the faces of the community members that look like me, that the so-called opposition claims to be fighting for. I've said this before and I'll say it again: Our community wants this project, and we will not be denied by folks who view us as beggars, as was so eloquently stated. We are not beggars. So y'all can keep coming and making noise, because we aren't going anywhere. We want Metropolitan Park, and we will continue to fight like hell for it.
Thank you. Calling numbers twenty-six to thirty-two, twenty-six to thirty-two, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jerry Lo, and I work with the Grow Community Center and the Culture Center in Flushing. We serve thousands of community members and seniors and young adults. We strongly support this program, and also, one more thing is we find out the benefit as a small owner of a small business. We all believe that this will be benefit of our community. And the second thing is like, being an Asian American, and I believe this will be a good chance for all different ethnic groups in Queens, because we all know that in Queens it's like a small, we are United Nations here. So we work with different ethnic groups, especially Asian, mostly Indian group, and I believe this will be a good place for us to do the cultural exchange and more performance or promoting our cultures. And we strongly support this program, and thank you for sharing. Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. We anxious to wait for that job finish, and then we have a big party. Of course, we cannot forget our president.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey. I'm a longtime Flushing resident over there for maybe like twenty-three years. I grew up in Flushing. That's why I studied, where I find my job, marry, have my kids, and raise him. I also see Flushing grow from a small town into a great business hub. Now, I feel that it's all start with one idea. As a guy, I say, hey, let me build something over there. I'm pretty sure he benefited from it. He makes money. But among with all the construction workers, with all the businesses moving to the buildings, with all the guys finding a job because that building exists, and who else? With the task we collect from all those trades, the schools, we able to build the roads, the brew, they all benefit from this. So among with a lot of these ideas, that's what we build Flushing. Now, I have never seen a scale like this, such a big scale of ideas. Imagine the amount of jobs. Imagine the amount of goods we can do for the communities. Therefore, I strongly support it. I wish it passed. Thank you.
My name is John Park. I'm the member of the Community Advisory Committee. I'm a small business owner and a member of Community Board Seven. My chairman is here. I'm in Flushing, and I live in Flushing, and my store in Jackson Heights. I've been forty years in Jackson Heights. I already passed by seven train. I'll talk to you later. I'm speaking in supporting the Metropolitan Park. I have attended many meetings and listening sessions and know this proposal is very well. It's good for the community. I vote yes when the land use proposal come to Community Board Seven, almost everybody. It will generate and change from asphalt parking lot to green space. A lot of jobs. We need jobs too, man. And business opportunities our community need. Also, it includes Sky Bridge that connect the proposed from Senator John Lu is connect Flushing to Willet's Point. That's one city become. That's like a picnic place. I'm humbly asking you both yes to this proposal, can move forward? And also, I want to ask you, everybody here, do you like asphalt parking lot? I've been forty years driving and seven train, take seven train. Parking lot is parking lot. There's nothing move. So do you want to change or move something else, or just protest? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for having us speak today. My name is Kai. I'm a small business owner and a community organizer. I was born and raised in Queens, and I currently reside in the heart of Queens. I'm someone who will be impacted by the project, and I'm fully supportive of the project. As an MWBE business owner, it's important for me that there's opportunities out there. The Metropolitan Park has spent the time to sit down with me and fellow business owners and highlighting their pledge to minority business owners. I believe the project has the power to provide tons of diverse jobs to the melting pot of the world. Moreover, as a resident of Queens, I would like to see the Met Willet's Station cleaned up, Roosevelt Avenue cleaned up. I want to have a clean and safe area I can, in the future, take my kids and my dogs to walk around. This project provides a cleaned-up future Flushing I can be proud of and that I can be thankful for. When will we ever get an opportunity to have the project this big and this massive come to Queens and is fully privately funded? Normally, I would be skeptical, but ever since the project has started, they have shown by their actions that they care. During COVID, there were more testing sites open in Queens than anywhere else. Currently, they have supported the Flushing bid, and they've been continually cleaning up the streets of Flushing. Queens deserves nice things. Who else is going to invest into our community?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Robert Dorsky. I'm hearing today a lot of opinions for the yes, a lot of opinions for the no, but I think the opinions that should matter the most are from the people that actually live and work in the community. I don't value opinions from people from Westchester to Westbury. I live in Corona. I'm in North Corona, five blocks from this. My child is being raised here, and you know what? What these fine folks have done to come forward and to present opportunity for the people of Corona, the people of Flushing, we should applaud them. We should thank them. So I fully support Metropolitan Park, and I look forward to seeing it being built. Thank you very much. Queens all day, baby.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak here. My name is Kevin McQueen, and I'm here to support Metropolitan Park. I am here with my union brothers and sisters from the Hotel Gaming Council. Not just to demand more jobs, we are here because these jobs are the kind of jobs that change people's lives, lift up time for poverty, excuse me, and create stability for thousands of working-class families. I am lucky to have a union job, and we owe it to the residents in Queens trying to get by and give them the same opportunities. As you consider this project, please consider how it will benefit so many New Yorkers who are willing to work hard but have limited access to jobs that pay well enough to support them through New York's affordability crisis. As a Queens person, I grew up in Queens my entire life as well, in Queens, in Corona. Before Citi Field, it was Shea Stadium. I walk outside of my house every day. I see Shea Stadium. This is a great opportunity for myself. As a union person, I do not beg for a job. I show up and I get the job done. I thank Metropolitan, and I also thank the Hard Rock as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deepthi Sharma. I too do not have my silk shirt, but I am a daughter of Queens, born and raised in Flushing, right by Queens College. I'm also a mom of two, an entrepreneur, and a community builder. For me, investing my time and energy here isn't just important, it's who I am. I also want to be transparent about why my kids are here today with me. I'm a working mom, and I don't have childcare today because my village isn't here. So I want to remind everyone that Metropolitan Park has actually thought about incorporating into their vision childcare, and how essential that is. That tells me they understand that care isn't just an afterthought. It's central to wellness of employees, families, and our entire community. What matters most is creating spaces where our communities can exist, thrive, work, and play. Queens has always been one of the most vibrant boroughs full of culture and resilience, but too often, we don't have the public spaces where neighbors can simply gather, relax, and enjoy together. We don't just want jobs here. We actually want to enjoy the spaces. I just came back from visiting family in Cincinnati, where we went to a soccer game. Before the game, we went and ate lunch at a local restaurant right outside the stadium, walked to a park where we listened to a live band playing, met up with friends, and then we headed inside. That's what real community investment looks like: public spaces, local businesses, and culture coming together to create joy and connection. And Queens deserves that same experience. As someone who works with small businesses, I've seen firsthand how projects like Metropolitan Park can ripple far beyond families. They bring customers to local restaurants, strengthen neighborhood communities, and keep dollars right here in Queens. This is not just about a park. Guess what? There is no park right there right now. We want a park. It's about investing in our community's future, and we can't forget our history. We are still living in the shadow of the legacy of Robert Moses.
All right. Hello, my name is Cara Fan, and I'm coming before you today as a member of Flushing Worker Center and a resident of Elmhurst. Flushing residents are already facing skyrocketing rents and rising property taxes, and we can't bear the burden of another casino. None of us will be able to survive. We are working all day and night, destroying our bodies with no time for rest or sleep just to make rent. Other communities build low-income housing on public land, but in Flushing, no elected officials have proposed it. The reason why I even heard about this casino in the first place is because Senator Ramos hosted a town hall to get a sense from the community of what they thought about this project after Flushing united with Jackson Heights Corona to call her to. Afterwards, she refused to alienate the land because she actually heard her concerns and took them seriously. We were shocked to see Ramos listen and spoke out, shocked because our politicians from Flushing always sell us out, but Senator Liu went beyond even our rock-bottom expectations when he shamelessly stepped in from Flushing to Ramos's district to tell the rest of Queens, maybe Ramos's people don't want a casino, but Asians in Flushing, we love to gamble. But Liu even admitted it would cause displacement and gambling addiction, but was so desperate for Cohen's crumbs that he just had to do it. When we told him our concerns, he shrugged and just said, well, displacement's going to happen. The problem of gambling addiction's going to happen, and this is lazy and dangerous leadership. It's harmful and does nothing but threaten our security and pit our communities against each other. Clearly, this government does not care what happens to the people of Flushing or their neighbors, with an exception to Ramos. Every time we express our opposition, we are dismissed. But people are too busy to know what's happening or being threatened, and I personally am tired of carrots and crumbs. I'm here surrounded by sellouts, calling out to those who are watching and listening to stand strong and say no to this casino. Public land for public good.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Victoria Hoyle. I'm a resident of Queens and a worker. I don't know about y'all, but personally, I think actions speak louder than words. I've heard a lot of words today from people who claim to want to support the community, yet their past actions have not lined up with their words. I'm going to start with some facts. First, the owner of the new casino will be Steve Cohen, one of the hundred richest people in the world. Secondly, businesses have an obligation to the stakeholders to make profits. Thirdly, casinos can only make their money through the losses of those who walk through the doors, our community members. Now, we have been told that the money from this casino will stay in the community. How can that be the case if the profits go to the owners? Their action in effect is theft from the community. What else would you call taking money from the working people? You have heard that the taxes from the casino will go into our schools, our community, that the actions of the wealthy have consistently shown that they will take every possible attempt to cheat us out of already too small portion that they pay, leaving us only with the losses. We have heard the words that Hard Rock is a safe developer for a hotel with a history of completing on budget and on time. Yet in 2019, their hotel developer was jailed for lying about the budgets of their project. Additionally, their words are that they support unions and union workers, and as they absolutely should, yet multiple workers died during the construction of said 2019 hotel when it collapsed. It took nine months to pull out their bodies from the rubble. I can only imagine the words they told the families of those victims of Hard Rock's greed. "Don't let this obvious money grab by those who don't care about anything except for their own profits destroy Queens families." Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Community Advisory Council. My name is Anthony Sam. I'm the Executive Director for the Alliance for Flushing Meadows Corona Park. On behalf of our board and its officers, I'm here today to speak in support of the Metropolitan Park proposal. As board members of the Alliance for Flushing Meadows Corona Park, a dedicated public-private partnership committed to the stewardship and enhancement of one of New York City's most vital green spaces, we recognize the immense potential that this eight-billion-dollar project holds for the borough of Queens. Indeed, the prospect of twenty-three thousand union jobs, significant transit improvements, and a well-designed and programmed new open space is compelling, and we share the vision for a prosperous future for the surrounding neighborhoods and broader Queens communities. Undoubtedly, the plans to transform roughly twenty-plus acres of asphalt parking into a robust, well-programmed open space, which includes climate-resilient infrastructure, is worthy not only of consideration but praise. However, we urge this committee to ensure that the other eight-hundred-and-forty-eight acres... However, we urge this committee to ensure that the other 848 acres of Flushing Meadows Corona Park outside of the proposed development footprint don't succumb to the chronic underfunding it has received. A shining, immaculately maintained resort campus within a historically neglected public park in one of the country's most marginalized communities is an undesirable outcome for everyone involved. I want to praise New York City Parks, Queens Borough President Richards, and his predecessors, as well as so many of our advocates on the city council, including Councilman Francisco Moya and Parks Committee Chair Shekhar Krishnan, for their advocacy and support to secure what funding they can for FMCP. But largely, our city has failed to ensure that FMCP received the needed investment and capital infrastructure improvements to secure the future our communities deserve. The Metropolitan Park proposal is ambitious and includes what is the most robust community investment of any casino application in New York to date, though none of this investment currently addresses the severe budget shortfalls and operational challenges that plague the most popular areas of Flushing Meadows Corona Park. Turning a parking lot into a green space is a worthy endeavor, but together, we hope this project can work hand-in-hand with their closest neighbor in the Alliance for Flushing Meadows Corona Park and New York City Parks to improve the daily park experience for our most frequent users. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Lin, and I am a lifelong resident of East Elmhurst. I work at the Korean-American Family Service Center. For over 36 years, KFSC has been dedicated to serving individuals affected by gender-based violence and other forms of oppression and abuse. As a nonprofit committed to empowering immigrant survivors and their families, we know how essential, safe, and accessible public spaces are for the wellbeing, healing, and connection, community connection. That is why Metropolitan Park Project represents such a transformative opportunity, not only to enhance green space and improve community access, but also to foster healthier, more connected Queens. This project is more than an investment in open space. It is an economic engine for Queens, from construction and maintenance jobs to opportunities for small businesses, cultural organizations, and nonprofit partners like ours. Metropolitan Park will generate hundreds of good-paying jobs that can directly benefit immigrants and working-class communities. For many families we serve, we often struggle with economic insecurity. These opportunities are life-changing. Access to steady employment combined with vibrant community spaces helps break cycles of poverty, strengthens family stability, and builds pathways to long-term mobility. Metropolitan Park has the power to link health, safety, and opportunity with economic growth that benefits everyone. As a proud partner of this initiative, we urge you to prioritize this vital investment in Queens' future. Together, we can ensure Metropolitan Park becomes a lasting source of healing, safety, and opportunity for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Dave Sands. I am the Queens Business Agent for Local 3, IBW. I represent the electric workers. So I am 49 years old. I'm a lifelong resident of Queens. I grew up in Ridgewood and Glendale. I served on the Community Board, Community Board 5. I know all the ins and outs. You know, getting a park built in your community and having park renovations for different parks in Queens takes a lot of work on the Community Board and advocating in your neighborhood. And to have this much parkland given back to the community, parks and ballfields, and the work that Metropolitan Park is going to give back to the community, that's unheard of, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this community, and you should be embracing it and not jeering it every time someone comes up to speak about it. I also, you know, I represent, also, we have electricians that work year-round at City Field, and Steve Cohen does not let anyone inside his stadium do any work in that building that is non-union. He supports unions. Whether it's a concert that's there, it's an event that's there, it's all done by unions, all the work there, he supports us. So to say he's all talk, he's backed that talk up, we don't beg for jobs. He supports union labor, he supports the middle class. And, you know, one of the hecklers keeps yelling, "Follow the money, follow the money." We are going to follow the money. We're going to follow the money to good-paying jobs. We're going to follow the money. We're going to follow the money that supports small businesses, that they are going to support and have selling food there. They have explained that the small businesses of Corona and Jackson Heights are going to have a place at the food hall. Follow the money to a new subway station. Follow the money to new infrastructure, okay? So keep yelling, "Follow the money," because we're going to follow the money to something great here in Metropolitan Park. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeanne Silver. I am the president of Flushing Meadow Corona Park Conservancy. Yes, there is a conservancy, and there is an alliance. And I'm glad that Anthony, who went first, of course, Anthony, I can get it out. Anthony is also the administrator of Flushing Meadow Corona Park, and the two of us have worked very closely over the years to get the park up and running with the shortest budget, I think, in the world's history for a park at the size of 148 acres. I know the hardship that Janice Milnick, who is the former administrator, went through for Flushing Meadow Corona Park. I am definitely against having any parkland given up for any reason. And I'm not saying this is a bad reason, and I'm not saying it's a good reason, but it's a reason. Parkland is for the people. I'm here because of Flushing Meadow Corona Park, and you here, all from the union, I think is great. You outnumber us almost 30 to 1. I've been keeping a little track. I've been to just about every meeting, and Sally and I, we could give the meeting together. And Jalissa, she has been involved with the park for many, many years, and her heart is in the park and in that community. But I want all of you to remember, I don't have much time. We have elections coming up. Your part here is never mind also being union people. Voting your union people in, voting your city council members in, voting the people who represent you, and make sure when you put that vote in for that person, whoever it is, stop and think, what is the future really going to come to? Check out everybody who's running this election period. And God bless Flushing Meadow Corona Park and Queens and the world's park.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Cohen, Sr. I am a former member of Community Board 8. I'm a former member of the NAACP Northeast Queens Branch. Actually, I will be a member for life, but I served on the Community Board. I served on the Community School Board as an elected member. I'm here tonight to, one, support my son Kenny Cohen. And yes, Borough President, I do have that problem because there is a grandson named Kenneth Cohen also. So he is now KC. But he is my future. This project is Queens' future. The dollars that will be spent will be spent wisely. It will be up to the community because they have given the community the opportunity to be a part of this project. So we need to look at things. Even though you don't like them, you have to pull forward with them. You don't like congestion pricing, but the dollars will be overwhelmingly for the city of New York. People didn't like cannabis, but the dollars that come to the communities will be overwhelmingly supportive for the people of New York. And the casino will do the same. So it is time to get out there, push this project forward, and win, win, win.
Thank you, members of the committee. My name is Eddie McWilliams. I'm the Executive Director of the Cement and Concrete Workers District Council Lesset Fund, representing the concrete industry workforce in New York City, as well as our concrete industry contractors. The Cement and Concrete Workers District Council proudly endorses this extraordinary $8 billion Metropolitan Park proposal to develop a world-class economic hub adjacent to City Field in Queens. There are a lot of hard-working people living here in Queens and New York City, as we know, that are struggling to provide for themselves and their family. This visionary project responsibly leverages underutilized land to create a dynamic economic engine, driving unparalleled growth and delivering immediate and long-lasting benefits to our hard-working families here in Queens and New York City. The Metropolitan Park and Hard Rock Development will generate thousands of high-quality, union-supported jobs in construction, in entertainment, food and beverage, gaming, and hospitality. These careers will offer competitive wages, critical benefits like health insurance, and clear pathways to economic stability for our neighbors and our families. This initiative aligns seamlessly with our mission to champion sustainable, community-uplifting projects that force a meaningful employment. We applaud the Metropolitan Park and Hard Rock team for their exemplary four-year commitment to inclusive outreach and collaboration with Queens families, Queens communities, stakeholders. Their efforts ensure this project reflects our area's needs and aspirations. We urge the Metropolitan Park Community Advisory Committee to advance this proposal and pledge our expertise to ensure its success. The Metropolitan Hard Rock Development is a game changer for Queens, and we proudly support this project. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the council for allowing us this opportunity to speak. My name is Kenny Cohen. You've heard from my father a little earlier. I am also on Queens Community Board 8. I'm a former National Board Member of the NAACP, and I'm a second-generation journeyman electrician for IBW Local 3. I inherited my love for community from my parents. You know, my dad would often take me out to meetings like this. And my first opportunity to interact with Metropolitan Park, I had my son with me. And all throughout this process, community came together, to the point where my little guy can pinpoint different parts of this project and identify who suggested those in the meeting. We've never seen this type of community engagement before. You know, to the point where I've met so many great people. You know, colleagues have become family. I learned about Tammy and the great work that she does with our kids. I met Sharon and learned about the great things that she does in Forest Hills with her mother's group. I shared bottles of sake with Bob and shot pool with Thomas at his KTV. You know, this has truly been community-led and community-built. And, you know, I don't know about the billionaire playbook that you all are familiar with, but the billionaire playbook that I know doesn't bring community to the table. They look for the government subsidies so that they don't have to use their own money to build their projects. They don't pay union wages and give workers a fair share. But now we have an opportunity to change what that billionaire playbook looks like, and that starts here in Queens, and it starts here with Metropolitan Park.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Tim O'Connor, and I'm a proud member of Local 3. That's right. And I'm here today with other members of Local 3 to show support to the New York Mets, the Hard Rock, and the Metropolitan Park Project. This is a generational project that'll create thousands of jobs for building trades and also good-paying, thousands of good-paying union jobs afterwards, once it's open. From day one, Steve Cohen has included not only the building trades, but more importantly, the community, and in this day and age, that rarely happens. They care about our voices and concerns. Union jobs are good-paying with benefits and pensions, one of the few pathways into the middle class. Local 3 participates in Helmets to Hard Hats, which is a program to get our veterans back to work. Another program we are part of is NEW, which is non-traditional employment for women who have an interest in working in the trades. This is a desolate area, and it just makes sense. It's an amazing opportunity to change lives, build up Queens and its economy. This is a no-brainer to support this project, and it's a no-brainer for Queens, and it deserves this project. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dennis Eibrich. I am a council representative for the New York City District Council of Carpenters and a proud, born-and-raised Queens resident. I represent thousands of hard-working union carpenters across this city, including many who call Queens home. I'm here to voice my strong support for this proposal. This is a transformative project that will bring good-paying, family-sustaining union jobs and long-term careers well into the future. From day one, this development will be built by union tradespeople, men and women who dedicate their lives to their craft. That means the highest quality work, the strongest safety standards, and a project delivered the right way. But this is more than just an economic engine. Metropolitan Park will revitalize this area, providing world-class entertainment, new public spaces, and opportunities for local businesses. It will make Queens not just the home of the Mets, but the premier sports and entertainment destination in the region. And as someone who grew up in Queens, I know firsthand how much projects like this matter. They create opportunity, they strengthen neighborhoods, and they open doors for the working families to reach the middle class, unlike the predatory contractors who have exploited workers for years in this neighborhood's very own backyard. But this is a responsible development. It invests in people, it invests in communities, and invests in the future of Queens. I urge the committee to support this proposal. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to the board. My name is Reggie Piggies. I am the CEO and owner of Piggies Group Solutions, where we empower communities and build futures through real estate. I was born in South Jamaica, Queens, raised in Hollis, Queens. That's 205th Street, to be exact. And I have lived in Corona for over two decades. I've been here long enough to see, I've gone to Shea Stadium, I've seen it taken down, I've seen City Field built. One of the things that you may or may not be aware of that, because of what people want to determine to be a park, which is actually a parking lot, one of the ill effects of all this asphalt is that we live in what's considered to be an urban oven. What does that mean? That means on any given day, hot summer day, the ambient temperature is 10 to 12 degrees higher than any other areas in the community. Compound that with being sandwiched right between LaGuardia Airport's runways, and it raises the temperature. What does that do? We have a large respiratory issue right there in that area. Being a shareholder and a resident of Dorrie Miller, we are the closest residential housing facility right now, temporarily, until the soccer housing goes up. And the 450 units that this project is placing, people here complain about housing and why are we not, the project not putting housing on public lands? Well, they're creating a subsidy where they're putting housing and creating affordable housing. So when you look at this project, this is a project that has been built from the ground up. They engaged with the community. You see aspects of what the community wanted to see in the project in all facets of the project. Generally, when large developers come in, they don't do that. Please support this project.
Good evening, member of the Metropolitan Park Community Advisory Committee. My name is Karen Wang. I'm here on behalf of Hamilton Medicine House in support of the Metropolitan Park Project. I work as a program director at Hamilton Medicine House Asian American Recovery Service, one of New York City's leading behavioral health clinics with a specialization in serving Asian-American community. Since 1983, we operate an outpatient behavioral health clinic and supportive housing in Corona, Queens, as well as a substance chew disorder and problem gambling clinic on the Lower East Side, the first and only is kind in New York City and state. We serve the community across multiple Asian languages and dialects. We are grateful that Metropolitan Project has engaged with our organization and other in multiple listening sessions to understand and address the needs of the community. Through this discussion, the project has committed to create 25 acre of public park space where residents will be able to enjoy playgrounds, soccer fields, bike path, benefiting their overall wellbeing. Thanks to this project, we were able to act as a resource for people of Queens. We would like to expand our service and cater the unique needs of every individual, providing care and connection citywide. This development... This development would allow us to create an even stronger support network for the community member who desperately need the affordable, accessible mental health service, connecting them with the resource they need and deserve. Due to its enrichment of Queenspace, social surface, and economic benefit, we encourage this community to also support the Metropolitan Project. Thank you so much for the opportunity for me to speak.
Good evening. My name is Greg Coles. The sole provider of a child's place daycare center that's been in the community for over 40 years. And what we've been developing has been the youth. And that's what I haven't heard here, mostly talking about the youth. It's not about us. It's about the youth and the jobs. So we need to make sure we understand that, that it's really about the youth and trying to get the jobs developed. And that's what we're trying to do here. If you look back on time, when it had, the Flushing Meadow was first built, when we was doing the World's Fair and everything, we started developing. We started going on and developing it as we go. And it went from the solo panels to the development center, and now it's the eighth. We got a lot of things going on there. So what we need to do at the same time period is look at the youth and see what we can do to try to make sure they get trained and get jobs. All these jobs are coming available, but if the youth are not trained, they're not going to get the jobs. So they got an economic development center on the table that we're trying to look for. So we want to make sure the youth can come out and the youth can get trained so they can take these jobs. And that's what we're all about. It's not all about the casino. It's not about the casino. There's a lot more that they're doing for us than just the casino. So that's why I'm for this project. It's for the project because it's for the community. And the more things we can put in the community so we can develop and grow, then our kids and my kids can go out and they can get jobs and they can develop, and they can move on. And that's what the development is all. So I'm totally for this project. I've been with it from the beginning. I'm going to take it to the end, and that's what we're all about in this community, is shining a badge. I'd like to thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Schellenberg. I'm a senior residing in East Elmhurst, Queens. I'm here to strongly oppose the Metropolitan Park Casino on our parkland. This project is being sold at economic development, but let's be clear, casinos extract wealth from working-class communities and funnel it into the pockets of billionaires and the state. Local families are left to bear the social and economic costs. Those most targeted are often the most vulnerable, people struggling with poverty, housing insecurity, and gambling addiction. Billionaire Steve Cohen has poured his fortune into influencing decision-makers and misleading the public. He hid his true intentions behind presentations and surveys about entertainment and park improvements. I once experienced one of those aggressive pitches and had to remind myself that it's, after all, a casino. Cohen needed the alienation of parkland to proceed. State Senator Jessica Ramos refused. He then promised Senator John Liu a pedestrian bridge in exchange for introducing this bill. Senator Liu had, in fact, once worn of the harm casinos pose, especially to the Asian-American community. Cohen's promises of new parkland, entertainment spaces, and bridges are not guaranteed. They're not contracts. We know from experience that developers often walk away once they get what they want. This casino would worsen our quality of life, more gridlock, pollution, and accidents. And while Cohen talks about subway improvements, he cannot guarantee more trains or less crowding. As a senior, I've seen how projects like this exploit rather than uplift. We deserve real investment.
Thank you. Your time.
Good evening. My name is Ed Wesley. I'm a community board member for some 20-odd years. I'm also a Jackson Heights beautification former president for more years than I want to say. I'm here to say no tonight to this proposition. I was raised in Brooklyn, in Bed-Stuy, in my youth. And in my youth, if a kid offered me 25 marbles, I'm sorry, 78 marbles for 25, I'd tell him to go to hell, right? Wouldn't you? Yeah. That's what they're doing here. They're giving 25 acres of, to correct my good friend Sully, of park, private park, I might add. He kept saying it's a public park. It's a private park. They will supply the security, they will supply the maintenance, not for the people that use Flushing Meadow Corona Park. Those people are not going to spread a blanket and build a charcoal stove to cook out. It's not the kind of park they're talking about. Let's be honest with this. My good friend, Councilman Moya, just came back, and I'd like to congratulate him on his legacy of building a soccer stadium. Good luck. And my good friend George Dixon also got his roadway tonight to build a proposition of continuing the racing in Corona. So, yeah, soapbox. Thank you, Sully. I'd also like to reach out to Julissa, because we worked on a project in, well, I'm not going to have time to do that, but I am totally against this proposition, and thank you very much.
Can we get numbers 50 through 60 to the microphone, please? 50 through 60 to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alexis Collyanidis. I'm a public school parent, a small business owner here in Queens, a resident of Jackson Heights. I've worked on community initiatives with many of you in this room, which is why it's a huge, huge disappointment to me to even be here tonight. Watching people that I've admired and respected fold in half for the whims of a multi-billionaire is deeply unsettling. It also speaks to a broader systemic issue, the disinvestment of our neighborhoods. We are literally fighting over crumbs from Steve Cohen's monstrous pie. On one hand, I can't blame some of us who've gotten behind this. You know, we have been left behind, it's true. But Steve Cohen's $15 million grant to the Queens Chamber of Commerce was a down payment for your support. Do not forget that. When you are worth $23 billion with a B dollars, that's about the equivalent of me buying you a slice of pizza. It's a drop in his gold-plated bucket. Cohen then went on to spend another $9 million in lobbying expenditures. What could we have done with $9 million for our schools, our libraries, our hospitals? You have been duped. You are worth much more than that. Queens is worth more than that, and you have been lied to. The very existence of billionaires is a moral and ethical failure. We could get the nice things we deserve if our bought politicians had the moral courage to tax the rich. I do not want to see any of you online posting Queens get the money when it's literally blood money. Steve Cohen is ruthless, he's a criminal and a bully. Steve Cohen is not your friend. Michael Sullivan is not your friend. My faith in this process is nonexistent. I've attended multiple community board meetings, I've witnessed dissent be stifled, I saw the two-hour dog and pony show, we got the 30-minute version tonight. I saw CB3 members sitting in those luxury boxes at City Field. What do those cost, by the way? Whatever happens here in the coming weeks, I will sleep well tonight, knowing that I have given it my all to fight this predatory casino for my children, who I would love to be home with tonight, but I'm wasting my energy fighting things we shouldn't be fighting for. We should be fighting ICE in our community. We should be fighting for fully-funded schools. You are selling out your community for--
Thank you. Your time.
Good afternoon. Good evening. I'm going to read this on behalf of businesses in our community. Dear Governor, Oklahoma, Gaming Facility Location Board, and the CAC here as well, we are Queens small business owners. Our success rises and falls with our neighbors, but rising rents already squeeze us. Now hedge fund billionaire Steve Cohen and Hard Rock International want to grab 77 acres of public land to build Metropolitan Park, a massive casino and hotel complex in northeast northern Queens. Casinos drain wealth from communities. They keep people inside dark, windowless spaces for hours away from local shops. After a recession, retail sales in casino towns dropped two to three times more than in similar communities without casinos. That's from Boise State University. Casino developers tout a Queens food hall, but this won't offset broader harms, gambling addiction, unsustainable environmental burden on Flushing Creek and the Bay, increased traffic and air pollution, and displacement of working-class residents and businesses you claim to represent. We cannot stand by while this project threatens our local economy and a unique neighborhood character. We call on you to reject Metropolitan Park Casino. Sincerely, Second Story Pilates and Yoga, 969 NYC Coffee, ART, Art Retail Therapy Shop, A Wong Kitchen, Bagel House, Valley 868 Food Market, Bow &amp; Pancake, Dental House, Bula Arts and Culture, Cake House, The Sevallios Brothers, Chaos Liberator, Columbus Shoe Repair, Vicentino Frank's Pharmacy in Jackson Heights, Halal Donor Kebab, Han Ju Restaurant, Jackson Heights Bakery, JC French Dry Cleaners, JD Breakfast and Coffee, Callow Design Studio, K&amp;L Deli, Zoo Restaurant, Leaf Bar and Lounge, Letty's Bakery, Lockwood Melting Cups--
Thank you. Your time.
All right, good evening. My name is Wesley Sim, and I'm the regional marketing manager for the shop in Skyview. I'm located right here, just in the neighborhood of the future Metropolitan Park. And myself, I'm also a Queens resident for almost 20 years. So as a neighboring property, I strongly support this project because it will build a lot of opportunity to our community. So first, it will create new jobs across a wide range of skill levels, helping both young professionals and local families. And second, the inclusion of the world-class concert hall will give a younger generation more access to light music and cultural experience without having to live in Queens. Yeah. And finally, by drawing more visitor for entertainment, dining, tourism, this project will directly benefit surrounding business like ours, the shopping center. So encourage people to shop, to eat, to spend more time in the neighborhood in our Queens. Yeah, so this project's not only about a casino, it's about building a vibrant destination that uplifts our community and supports our local economy, and also make Queens a place for people to visit and experience. All right, thank you so much.
Good evening. How you doing? My name is Ralph Cruz, and I represent, I'm a New York State UA organizer and a proud Plumber's Local One. I feel your pain. I do. My heart goes out to you, but I also understand the benefits, right? But this is bigger than all of us. This is for Queens and the future of Queens, right? We have one of the best, L워dy Airport, one of the best in the country. We have City Field right next to it, and the new stadium coming up, right soccer field, and what do we have in between? Have you, have anybody here driven there lately? It's dark, it's like the land of the lost. So all I'm saying is, let's think about the future of our kids and the benefit of all of us, because it's beneficial for all of us, not just one of us. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tommy Kenyans. I'm a business agent for Plumbers Local One, New York City, and I cover the beautiful borough of Queens. First, I'd like to thank the board for your time. We at Local One are in full support of the Metropolitan Park and the construction of a new casino, creating union jobs not only with the initial build, but creating lifelong union jobs for the community with the service and maintenance of this extraordinary project. Union jobs affording community people medical, 401K, pensions, and good-paying jobs. In the end, it's giving them the ability to retire with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Committee members, thank you for listening to us today. My name is Sumana Hariharishwara. I live in Jackson Heights, 11372. I volunteer with Worth Fighting For and Jackson Heights Indivisible, and I'm a small business owner. On Sunday last week, I stood on the open street there in Jackson Heights for a few hours, and I gathered these thoughts from Western and Central Queens residents who can't make it to this hearing, but want you to know, they don't want a casino here. Some quotes: "Our community does not need another place for people to build addiction." "A bad bet where the house, hedge fund billionaires, wins and the community loses." "Keep public land for the public." "No community needs a place for people to just lose money." "If you recall OTB, you know gambling ruins neighborhoods and family lives." "Casinos increase addiction issues for local community." "No casino in our neighborhood." "Casinos equal more poverty, more domestic abuse, more addiction." "Gamble somewhere else." "We need more parks, not casinos, please." "Parks and small businesses, no casino." "A casino means less housing." "Stop displacing communities." "Tax for affordable housing and parks." "No handouts to billionaires." "Don't sell-out Queens." These are just a few of the scores and scores of comments that we got. Here are three pages that we collected, and consistently, as I stood there by the Jackson Heights Farmer's Market, our neighbors said, "Yonkers, Times Square maybe, but not here." Thank you.
Hello? Hello. My name is Sam, and I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I was born and raised in Flushing, and I'm asking to not approve of building the casino. I do not approve of a billionaire hedge fund manager dictating the fabric of my neighborhood and dictating the values of my community. The casino will extract wealth and money from working-class New Yorkers so that Steve Cohen can race Elon Musk to be the next trillionaire. This city has a housing crisis. While the price of groceries and our rent and our bills go up, the city have done nothing to help New Yorkers. Over 300,000 New Yorkers are homeless. One in five New Yorkers report they are living paycheck to paycheck. We need public land to expand public housing, not private hotels and private casinos. Of the jobs they claim this project will create, half are temporary. The $8 billion investment could instead come from tax on billionaires like Steve Cohen. Use to create sustainable and permanent jobs, permanent union jobs to create housing, recreation centers, schools. But Stephen Cohen, our city council, our community board would not support that because that would not enrich them. You're continuing to widen the wealth gap in the United States. This is not sustainable. This burden will weigh on the back of working-class Americans until something breaks. But it won't be us that breaks. Working-class Americans are strong. We will not be divided, and we will not watch as our workers--
Good evening, committee members. Michelle, I'm a public school parent in Jackson Heights, a proud immigrant, and I'm urging you today to reject the proposed Metropolitan Park Casino. The applicant never acknowledges the real harms casinos bring to nearby communities. One of the most devastating is gambling addiction, and I know personally what it feels like to stay up all night waiting for a loved one to come home from a casino or to watch families lose everything, including retirement savings. Casinos profit off pain and addiction. A 2024 UMass Amherst study found that 90% of casino revenue comes from at-risk and compulsive gamblers. Instead of taxing the rich, casinos act as a regressive tax on working-class and immigrant families. Lower-income people lose a higher percentage of their income gambling, and studies show immigrants and low-income residents are twice as likely to develop gambling problems. The site sits between Flushing and Corona, the neighborhoods that are predominantly immigrant, low-to-middle income, and have a home to many seniors and schools. Rather than avoiding at-risk populations, the developers are targeting them, offering free buses and slot machine vouchers to leer vulnerable residents. The fallout is devastating. When families lose everything, the social costs include--
My name is Cody Herman. I live in Flushing. I'm also on Queens Community Board Seven, and I've been advocating against this project since 2022. I've witnessed the ways that the applicant team have manufactured consent with the help of socially and politically affluent individuals and organizations throughout the area surrounding the project site. During visioning sessions, the applicant team said that about 1,000 participants placed about 5,800 stickers and post-its, and there were well over 10 different places to leave comments as stickers. That means that the average participant likely responded to less than half of the prompts shared at those visioning sessions. Those visioning sessions were social networking events for politically connected individuals and organizations, not real community visioning sessions. Similarly, those door-knocking surveys failed to mention a casino explicitly, and from what I witnessed in my neighborhood, they were administered by teenagers who knew nothing about the casino themselves without any data integrity, transparency, or honesty. A community board forum meeting about this project was delayed due to, and I quote, this is the official reason, "pressure from outside sources leaving members concerned for their well-being." People connected to this project and the application team have actually threatened and intimidated people to the point that they are concerned for their safety. I stood outside Citi Field for a week in July during a bunch of home games with the sign, asking people, "Do they think a casino would harm neighboring communities?" 84% of respondents said the casino would hurt neighboring communities, and these numbers are in line with 75% of residents surveyed by Senator Ramos's independent survey who did not want a casino in their neighborhood, and about 70% of voters in Community Board Seven who rejected the casino proposal, according to a survey done by Ming Kwan Sander. Anyway, this casino is racially predatory, and it will also harm a generation of young sports fans who are already struggling with mobile sports betting addictions. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Charlie Rafnello. I'm from Queens, New York. I live here, I work here, I'm probably gonna die here. I am standing here to talk about the casino. A lot of people have made a lot of talk about the parks and the 20-acre park we're gonna get. I don't know if you know this, it's three blocks away from a 900-acre park, so we probably don't need those specific 20 acres. I know there's a lot been made about the food court and how that's gonna open things for local businesses, but there's already Roosevelt Avenue with a number of restaurants, there's Main Street with a number of restaurants. We don't need a little food court right there. The reason you guys are here is because you guys want to open a casino and take money. Don't pretend that it's anything other than that. You guys are here to take money from the community, you guys are here to prey on the community. Anything else is disingenuous, and we don't want it. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Eddie Valentin. I am a Jackson Heights resident and a managing partner of several LGBTQ businesses for the past 36 years. I'm here in favor of Metropolitan Park. Regarding jobs, every time I put a "help wanted" ad for a bus person, I get so many people who are overqualified, and they just want to be close to their families, and they want to be in Queens. They don't want to go to Manhattan, and they don't want to go to Brooklyn. Regarding casinos, these casinos will be providing many high-paying jobs that don't require college education, which is very important to a lot of my neighbors, especially living here 36 years. I have many neighbors who would be very happy with this. There are many ugly Amazon warehouses popping up everywhere, and Amazon does nothing for our community, and very little people protest them. Cell phone companies have our children addicted to apps. They have their adults addicted to gambling on their phones, and very little people protest those phone companies. I hear people talking about other projects where investors have failed the community, but Cohen has already proven to be a community partner through the Mets Foundation. The area around Citi Field has been dark and ugly. Nobody has protested that darkness and ugliness for 36 years. Now somebody wants to approve it with his money, but that we can protest. Yes, they are making a lot of promises with this project, but we have seen that they have also a proven record to work with the community. And those of us who spoke for this project didn't do it because we were offered anything. We were here because we were part of the planning stage for this for the last four years or five years. And before anybody yells, "Follow the money," I say, yes, we do have something to follow. We have to follow the yellow brick roads at Metropolitan Park. We deserve this.
Can we get, excuse me, can we get 61 through 70 to the microphone? Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please respect your fellow New Yorkers.
Respect us! Respect yourself!
Sir, you're up.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Francisco Segarra, and I am an owner of Jackson Heights, a resident of Queens. I've lived my whole life in Queens, and it's really a big thing for me to be able to hear that we want to be able to put up a casino, and we have so many other necessities that the money could be spent on. But we are a Queens small business owner. Our success rises and falls with our neighbors, but rising rents already squeeze us. Now billionaire Steve Cohen and Hard Rock want to grab 77 acres of public land to build Metropolitan Park, a massive casino and hotel complex in northern Queens. Casinos drain wealth from communities. They keep people inside dark, windowless spaces for hours away from local shops. After a recession, retail sales in casino towns dropped two to three times more than in smaller communities without casinos. The casino developers talk about a Queens food hall, but this won't offset broader harm, gambling addiction, sustainable environment burden on Flushing Creek, and increased traffic and air pollution, and displacement of working-class residents and businesses surrounding and all around that casino. We cannot stand by while this project threatens our local economy and unique neighborhood character. We call on you to reject Metropolitan Park Casino. This letter is signed by the owners of all of the following businesses: Second Story Pilates and Yoga, 969 New York City Coffee, Art Retail Therapy Shop, Awang Kitchen, Bagel House, Valley 868 Food Market, Bow &amp; Pancake, Bento House, Bull Arts and Culture, Cake House, Cevallos Brothers, Chaos Liberator, Columbus Shoe Repair, El Vicente Frank's Pharmacy, Halal Donor Kebab, Hand Jot Restaurant, Jackson Heights Bakery, JC French Dry Cleaners, JD Breakfast and Coffee, Calo Design Studio, KNL Deli, Kestas, Lausanne Restaurant...
Thank you. Your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseline Henau Estrella, and I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Housing Services of Queens. We have been in the community for 30 years, making sure that our neighbors are able to stay and dignify homes, that our neighbors are able to buy and also stay and thrive in our communities. We are in full support of Metropolitan Park. We have been part of the community and part of the discussion for so long. We have seen, and I understand, that there has been a skepticism about projects in our communities, but in this project, it has been an inclusive process where we have been part of the table. We, for so many years, we have been part of the menu. However, with Metropolitan Park and the way that they have been communicating with us, with the community, have they been suffering? The community, yes, that has been displaced, but in order to combat displacement and reverse gentrification, we need to be able to provide the tools that people need, which is jobs. We cannot have adequate housing without adequate jobs. And this process and in this opportunity, they are investing in our future, they are investing in our problems now, and we cannot say no to progress, and we cannot say no to the opportunities that this project will be able to bring. And yes, let's bring investment, let's bring money to our communities. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chanel Thomas Henry, born at Booth Memorial Hospital in Flushing and raised in Corona East ElmHurst for 46 years. As a community resident, a wife, and a mom, I am raising my family, and most recently, the Democratic nominee for city council to represent the district where this program will be. For four years, I have sat in on visioning sessions alongside my neighbors, business owners throughout the district, older adults, some of our youth, to help develop this plan, Metropolitan Park. I have sat and listened to those in opposition, one-on-one, as well as attended many of those meetings, attended town halls, and additional meetings that Metropolitan Park put together, and have heard both sides. I have also walked the streets and personally knocked on doors throughout the community and listened to the concerns of our residents. Economic development, jobs, and real jobs for our community, because as Yasin Bo said, we can talk about housing, but we can't pay for housing without a job. For our small businesses, yes, we have many businesses on Roosevelt Avenue, but we also have street vendors who are trying to make a living and cannot get a job. But Metropolitan Park will bring a food hall where these individuals can vend safely and responsibly. When we talk about economic development, they have partnered to bring equity when others are shying away from diversity and equity throughout this country. And last but not least, they have created a blueprint for true community engagement. We see a lot of development throughout the city of New York, and often, they don't listen to what we want or what we want to hear. Metropolitan Park, for over four years, has listened, has recreated the plan to suit those needs, and will continue to support our community.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eddie J. Argetta. I am a combat veteran of the Marine Corps, two deployments to Iraq. I am here on behalf of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. I am the treasurer over at the Flanders Field Post 150, over here on 5111 108th Street in Corona. So I just want to say that we support this project, and this is why. From the very beginning, the project came to us, to the veterans. They asked us, "What do you need? How can we help?" No one else has done that. We're not invisible. We live in your neighborhoods, we live in the community, we contribute. We're here. We're not here just on Veterans Day or Memorial Day. We need more than just a "thank you for your service," pat you on the back. And for that reason, we support, and that's, well, for that reason, we support the project, because for us, it represents opportunity, it represents resources that, you know, and things that could help veterans in the community. And I don't know if he's still here, but one thing you gotta know about veterans, and just like the labor unions, we don't ask for handouts, and we don't beg. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Hi, everyone. Hello. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Elaine O'Brien. Sorry? What's that? Oh, okay. I feel like I'm talking to the room, because I've been listening to the room all night, you know, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Elaine O'Brien. I am a community member. I'm a resident of Jackson Heights, Queens. I'm a small business owner in Jackson Heights, Queens. I am a founding member of Queens Climate Project. I've worked with many of the elected officials who are in support of this project, and I am not at all in support of a casino in Jackson Heights, Queens, or anywhere near it. You can put that tattoo it on my arm. That's how I feel about this. I have issue with every inch of this project. I've been attending the visioning sessions, I've attended most of the hearings, and I've listened to the same argument over and over again. The one that sticks to me the most is that you can gamble on your phone. That's right, you can. Does that give us license to extract money from our own neighbors, our own neighborhood, to line the pockets of a billionaire? Why are we letting this happen? What, I mean, yeah, you know, my husband's a union member. My husband's a member of Local 30 Operational Engineers. I too appreciate and understand the need for union labor, and yet, do we have to exchange that union labor for a casino? Is that what, I mean, and one more thing, I've been to, I'm a big Mets fan, let's go Mets. I've been to many, many ballparks all over this country. A lot of them are nicer than Citi Field's. Most of them don't have a casino. You don't need it. And if you didn't need, you don't need these extractive elements to produce jobs. It's clear. It's everywhere, and we shouldn't have one here. So thank you for letting me speak.
My name is Caesar Rabuen. I'm a proud hospitality worker and member of the Hotel Game Council, and most of us are used to hearing developers talk about jobs and jobs, but the truth is, not all jobs are created equal. In this case, thousands of jobs will be permanent jobs for New Yorkers, for current and future members of the Queens community. And my union knows from her firsthand experience that this job will be some of the best hospitality jobs in the country. Instead of just shop jobs, we have the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to transform empty space into a world-class facility that we can all benefit from. I urge you to support this project. It gave us the investment we deserved. Thank you.
Joyce F. I oppose gambling, and the hotel vice have a bad, on moral grounds, that it's bad morally, and has a bad, they have bad impact on health. Gambling and hotels bring crime and are bad for physical health. I'm not your point, Pat.
Good morning, everyone. As you know...
Should I put it?
We'll just leave it in there, but also the chair would like to say something.
Do you start the timer?
We'll restart the...
Thank you.
We will, sir. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I just want to give a warning that we are stopping promptly at 7 o'clock. If you can make your comment shorter to give other people time to make a comment, please do so, but we are stopping at 7 o'clock, and there are two other opportunities for you guys to be able to come to make comments in person.
Good afternoon. You know, I'm a public school math teacher, and I can spot a malleway when my students are using their phone. And I just want to say, shame on you, Francisco Moya and Gregory Anderson, for not really caring about what everyone here is saying in the public hearing. Shame on you! It really shows that you care. Now, as a Queens native, as an organizer from the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and as a public school teacher, I came here to say no to the Metropolitan Park Casino. As you know, the math is not mathing here. Wages are stagnant while prices are skyrocketing. We're all going to be displaced by gentrification and horrible planning, and you know, we love our unions. In fact, we are union members ourselves. Brothers and sisters, they are pitting us against each other, but the reality is that we oppose these because they are giving us crumbles, they are giving us the worst thing that can happen, instead of building things for our community that employs union people and that helps our community. The kids that I teach deserve better, the kids that are your kids deserve better in our community. They don't deserve casinos. Why not build in a community recreational center for the youth and the elderly? There's so many things that we can build here in our communities. So neighbors, what is happening here in Corona, Flushing, Jamaica, Long Island, is not unrelated. It is political. It is a process that has been highly undemocratic...
have a bad, on moral grounds, that it's bad morally and has a bad, they have bad impact on health. Gambling and hotels bring crime and are bad for physical health. I might point that out.
Good morning, everyone. As you know. You're starting the timer.
We'll restart the timer.
Thank you.
We will, sir, thank you.
I just want to give a warning that we are stopping promptly at 7 o'clock. If you can make your comment shorter to give other people time to make a comment, please do so, but we are stopping at 7 o'clock. And there are two other opportunities for you guys to be able to come to make comments in person.
Good afternoon. You know, I'm a public school math teacher, and I can spot a malleway when my students are using their phone. And I just want to say, shame on you, Francisco Moya and Gregory Anderson, for not really caring about what everyone here is saying in the public hearing. Shame on you. It really shows that you care. Now, as a Queens native, as an organizer from the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and as a public school teacher, I came here to say no to the Metropolitan Park Casino. As you know, the math is not mathing here. Wages are stagnant while prices are skyrocketing. We're all going to be displaced by gentrification and horrible planning. And you know, we love our unions. In fact, we are union members ourselves. Brothers and sisters, they are pitting us against each other. But the reality is that we oppose these because they are giving us crumbles. They are giving us the worst thing that can happen instead of building things for our community that employs union people and that helps our community. The kids that I teach deserve better. The teach, the kids that are your kids deserve better in our community. They don't deserve casinos. Why not build in a community recreational center for the youth and the elderly? There's so many things that we can build here in our communities. So neighbors, what is happening here in Corona, Flushing, Jamaica, Long Island is not unrelated. It is political. It is a process that has been highly undemocratic, where politicians have been bought. Our community has rallied, has rallied months after months in these hearings, saying no time after time. But the Steve Cohen's Casino is being given a green light. We need to give decisive power to the people, to working people, not to the billionaires. We need to build people's resistance in our community to fight back against the billionaires. Shame on you.
Tell me when you're ready. Can I start? Oh, hello. Good evening. I'm someone who hasn't been spoken here tonight. That's the gambler, the horse player. He needs to be represented here tonight, and I think I represent myself. But if anybody thinks that this isn't about casino, you're out of your mind. That's all it's about. Because I'm a gambler. I play at resorts. I go there, you know, go all the time. I go to Yonkers. Do we really need casino in the Bronx? Is that going to make it a palatial place? Or we need another casino in Queens when we have one? We don't need another casino, okay? And as a gambler, I fear for most of the people that will go there, okay? The one place, the one businesses that will work out and do great is the pawn shops. They're all, they're at Rego, they're at the resorts. I asked the guy, "We get 30, 40, 50 people a day. We're doing good." Do you actually think a park is going to save people of this city? No way. And the question is, could he have built this park without building a casino? That's the question. And the answer is, he doesn't want to answer the question. He's got a hedge fund. Use it. He's got 2, 3 billion in it. Use it. What's wrong with the hedge fund? If you, you don't need the casino. If you're serious about helping the community build a park, I'm for parks. Use your hedge fund. We don't need another casino here. There's going to be one in Manhattan, there's going to be one here, there's going to be one there. More people will be go broke, and I wanted to let you know. Ask him, can he build this park without a casino? Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Brittany Shropshire, and I write, and I speak to you as a resident, a community member, and also a licensed clinical social worker to voice my strong opposition to the Metropolitan Park Casino proposal. A common tactic for people in power, including billionaires and millionaires, is to deprive our communities of what we need, prey upon our lack of jobs and resources, and exploit us by turning us against each other so we don't unite to fight the actual individuals responsible for harm. That's what I see happening, playing out in this room. A literature review published in 2022 explored the impact of casinos on northeastern communities in America and found that rarely do the communities benefit, that the, rarely do the communities that the casinos are placed in benefit the communities financially or in other ways. In fact, casinos were more likely to cause gambling problems in surrounding neighborhoods, increase levels of crime, and lead to housing foreclosures and evictions. As a mental health professional, I am all too aware on how casinos target your brain's reward center and exploit your cognitive distortions to set up the perfect environment for addiction. The ripple effect of gambling destroys people, families, and communities. Family disorder is a serious condition that leads to depression, anxiety, substance abuse, self-harm, and high rates of suicide. Currently, suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in this country. Is the legacy that you want to leave and is, the legacy that you want to leave is increasing your constituents' rates of suicide because you wanted to increase the billionaires' pockets? Again, I ask you, is the legacy that you want to leave increase rates of suicide because you wanted to fund a casino? I don't want this experience for myself or my fellow neighbors, and I believe we deserve better than this. We want real investments in our communities, jobs, housing, and park spaces. We don't want a luxury casino that will act as a parasite, sucking the money and life out of our local communities. Instead of giving, approving this plan, I just urge you to listen to your constituents and reject the Metropolitan Park Casino proposal.
Hi, Bill Bruno, Queens resident for almost 40 years, and here to tell you that although their presentation likes to say it's all about Queens, if you look at the fine print, not so much. They love to say they're about the local businesses and local vendors. But if you look at their application, what they actually put in writing, they say, "You're a local business. If you have one business facility anywhere in New York state, not city, state, and you hire a couple of New Yorkers." Taco Bell, Chuck E. Cheese, and Starbucks would qualify as local under that definition. So you can only imagine what they're going to put in the food court. For example, they mentioned at their organizational meeting, "You shouldn't have to go to Manhattan for high-class entertainment." And their presentation mentioned a lot of Queens partners. You look at the fine print, conspicuously absent from what they're presenting is their deal with the Netherlander, which is nine Broadway shows, including The Lion King and Hamilton. Lovely items, but also exactly the sort of high-class quality entertainment they say they're offering an alternative to. I mean, they say their marketing's, for example, competing with Las Vegas and Atlantic City. I mean, realistically speaking, I love the panorama at the Queens Museum. But if I'm marketing to that, I think I'm far more likely to be saying, "We can send you to Manhattan to see The Lion King and Hamilton", as opposed to saying to go to the panorama. What underlies both of these, again, the big difference between their slick presentation, what they actually put in the fine print, is a fundamental lack of forthrightness. That they're presenting one thing, and they mean another, which you can only find if you dig into it. This matters. These promises are unenforceable. There's no community benefits agreement. We're relying purely on a relatively nonexistent forthrightness on them to deliver. Queens' future isn't. It is Steve Cohen's financial future, which you only get if enough people are dulled and fooled by his nonexistent promises. Do not fall for it. Thank you.
Can we get numbers 71 through 74 to the microphone, please? 71 through 74 to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chandra Gomez. I am a lifelong Flushing resident. No one has ever come to me, solicited my opinion about this. I'm a union member of Union 2325. So are my children, and so is my father. However, I'm opposed adamantly to this casino. I'd like to know first, why is parkland being given to a billionaire who can afford to buy all the surrounding lands on his own and do all the things that he promises to do if he gets this casino license? Once we give away parkland, we can never reclaim it. And that land is not ours or yours to give away. That parkland belongs to our children. I'd ask, would Steve Cohen propose to build a casino in Central Park? He'd be ridden out of the city. 70% of the residents oppose this casino. Senator Ramos was the only government official who opposed it. She was the only one who had the integrity to oppose it. Because a recent study said that Flushing Meadow Park was the most underfunded park in our city. I'd ask you, why is that? All of you have a responsibility to answer that question. Why are we depending on Steve Cohen to fund our park? Flushing Bay is a wetland. I just saw ibises and ducks in Flushing Bay because the city finally invested in a sewage cleaning plant there. I don't know if any of you remember what it was like to drive over the Van Nuys Expressway years ago, you had to hold your nose, the stink was so horrible. What's going to happen when they build this casino? The stench is going to be unbearable.
Thank you, you're at time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bian. I have lived and working in Queens for 20 years. And thank you for your time, and let me testify for the Metropolitan Park. I attended a couple of presentations, and it was an eye-opening experience because this project is going to transform our borough. Metropolitan Park will utilize private funds to provide the public with the world-class recreation area, including parks, hotels, restaurants, a modern subway station, and many, many more. It will be a park I will be very proud to introduce to a friend, to many, many friends from all over the world. This is not a one-person decision. It is a collective effort involving thousands of hours of community input and professional work. So the team led by the Sully deserve applause today. The park is multifunctional. The most controversial aspect is the gaming casino. So argument that the casino will bring gambling addiction and other crimes does not hold. First of all, how many people have not been to casino? Maybe a handful. But how many people have been addicted to it? I think maybe 1% or less. A well-managed place with quality services and businesses won't be a bed of crime. On the contrary, an elected land is more likely to nurture nativity things. So if I ask you to name a few landmarks in Queens, you might mention the remnants of the World Fields from 100 years ago, the Unisfree Field or the US Open. Not many more. So let's vote yes to Metropolitan Park.
Thank you, you're at time.
Hi, I'm 16 years old and a second-generation immigrant, born and raised in Flushing, Queens. Adults like to say that young people will change the future. So please get off your phone, stop smirking, and listen to me. And I'm sorry if I'm crying because I'm frustrated and mad and you've let us all down. It's nothing but common sense to say no to the casino. You can't possibly imagine the devastation it would cause to my community. This is not about tourism or the physical attractiveness of the land. No beautiful green venue can disguise the disgusting business model that hacks our psychology to leech off of our wallets. Gambling is addiction. My home is not a destination for tourists to see a fleeting thrill while generations are ravaged right next door. This is not an investment because if you actually grew up here, you know that we have Mets and Forest Hill stadiums for music, Flushing Town Hall for community events, and Greenery at Casino Park or our botanical garden. If you cared, you'd build a park without a casino unless you, God forbid, God forbid, forget about profit. Don't fake our support or greenwash this gateway injection into alcoholism, mental health disease, crime, domestic abuse, and insecurity. There is no safe nurturing environment for childrens while parents gamble rent away. Listen to yourselves. You're providing jobs for us to construct our own demise. Casino is the antonym to safety, no matter how pretty you package it. No casino is a non-negotiable. Don't use the casino as a condition for the housing, the education, equal pay, infrastructure, social services, and healthcare we unconditionally deserve. Stop pretending that we don't exist. My vulnerable immigrant community doesn't deserve this. We can't afford this. And take my home out of your conniving, money-hungry mouth. Stop smirking, stop shaking your head. You're not listening, and I hope you know you've let the youth down. The youth are disappointed and mad, and it will show.
So as it is, no more time left. That was the last person to speak or to comment for this evening. But I will like to say this. It's two minutes. There is no more time, and I am comfortable in saying there is no more time. So you guys, I do want to say this. The disrespect, though, we said in the meeting what the rules were, and the disrespect we sat up here, we've allowed everyone to speak, when no matter what was said, but the disrespect is not going to get anyone anywhere, at least not with me. You have to respect each other. We respecting you for you to be able to speak. But to constantly be disrespected too does not make sense, and it doesn't get us together as a collective, period. I've sat here, and I've taken note, and as you say, we must, as the collective here, as the committee, go with what the, our constituents are saying. And predominantly, right now in this room today, there was more yays than nays, but we spoke to let everyone speak. So as I say, if you would like to comment, you can comment. You can online, or or you may come to our next meeting, which is September 16 at 10 a.m. in the same place. We welcome to see you there, everybody. Have a great night.